Could we please start with a roll call? Hold it. Everybody's racing for their seats.
Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Council members Bagley.
Present.
Finley.
Present.
Levison.
Here.
Samori.
Present.
Santos.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Mayor Yubacorm.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Public invited to be heard. I guess we need the list here. Each person will have three minutes to speak. So please state your name and address before you begin speaking. And the first person... Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council at this time?
Mayor, if we could introduce Alan Ginsburg, it would be good at this time.
I'd like to introduce Alan Ginsburg. He's the managing partner of Newmark Merrill, the new mall owner. So welcome, Alan.
Thank you. Good to be here. I just thought I'd share a little bit so that everybody knows a bit about our company and then just maybe talk about, you know, our future together here. Our company's, Newmark Merrill, is based in California, Colorado, and Illinois. I'm based here in Fort Collins. I've lived in northern Colorado for 14 years and been involved with real estate in northern Colorado for over 20 years. I introduced The Home Depot to the state of Colorado and actually got to know your city and Mayor Stocker and Gordon Pedro when we developed The Home Depot here in Longmont. And that was a very, a good process for us. We did a certain number of things to accommodate the community's concerns, and I think the project turned out, met everybody's expectations. As a company, we've got over 1,500 tenants, California, Illinois, and Colorado. We've got about 2 million feet of space here on the Front Range, which makes us one of the more dominant owners, and most of that in northern Colorado. I've been involved with development in Centerra as a partner with the McWinnies there and in Fort Collins and here in Longmont before, in Broomfield. So we've been, we've been active in and around this entire area for quite a while. Thirty years doing this for me, so taking on the biggest challenge of my career, which is the Twin Peaks Mall, is exciting. A little nerve-wracking too, but it's very exciting. Kind of like my daughter Jackie, I asked her, my daughter's here with me, you know, what should I say when I come? And she said, "Well, say it was really hard, but you didn't give up." And that's true. There were times when we wanted to give up. Very difficult transaction due to the nature of the selling parties and the complexities of the property. Those complexities still exist, by the way. Just because we bought it, the complexities didn't go away. But, you know, I think our time with your staff and with you council members in discussions over the, you know, I've been working on this truly for over a year. I mean, I've met with some of you a year ago, when I was taken in by Panatoni, when they hired us to come help them figure out what to do with the property. So we're very familiar with the property. And really, I think it's the encouragement and I think already the, you know, partnership that I see forming between us, your staff, and your council, that's really got us over the hurdle on a project that I might otherwise, if I'd had a city council and a staff that were maybe hostile or at least not supportive of seeing the mall redeveloped, we would have said no. Because in this market, there's too much risk. Retailing is still a flat business in America. It's no longer declining, but it's definitely flat. Retailers, some retailers are still filing bankruptcy, so the entire business is still very much in flummox. But we believe that as a team, we're going to figure out a way to revitalize this into an important community component that will, will serve you all long, you know, well for the next couple of decades. So we're really glad to be part of Longmont and your community, and I thank you for giving us this opportunity. And we're eager to roll up our sleeves, and we're working hard already. We've got a team of 85 people in our company and at least a dozen people that are focused on this project alone, including most of my time. So thanks for giving us the shot. We will not disappoint you.
Thank you, Alan. I'm looking quite forward to working with you. Okay, so the first person on our list tonight is Michael Cocoli.
Hi there. I'm Michael Cocoli from 420 North Parkside Drive in Longmont. And I think I'll tune in with our friend there and say that the city of Longmont has done a really good job over the years and has even been awarded, you know, like best, among the best 50 cities in the country to live in, and I agree with that. So I kind of support home rule, and I was reading the Constitution of the state of Colorado when I was very pleased to see that in Amendment, in Chapter 20, I think, in Amendment 6, it says that the people of each city and town of this state having a population of 2,000 or more can basically are vested and shall always have the power to make amend or replace the charter of the city and they should be able to make all kinds of local and municipal rules and run the city the way they want. You people run the city very well, and I really appreciate that. So I, I would like to ask you to please extend the moratorium because there's a lot of action in other cities and counties and states, and that might result in some favorable changes. The last thing I'd like to say is that I was looking at the Attorney General's webpage, the homepage of the, of the Colorado Attorney General, and he said that every day they work very hard to preserve Colorado's natural beauty, safeguard its precious waters, and he's dedicated to helping to keep Colorado a great place to live. So maybe he'll be very cooperative, cooperative with us, and this pre-emption thing might go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Brian Jeffries, followed by Teresa Foster.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Brian Jeffries, 4027 Milano Lane in Longmont, 80503. First, I'd like to commend the city staff for all the work they've done on the proposed draft oil and gas regulations. But there was a conflict that I noted and I brought up to the planning commission, and they didn't do anything with it, so I wanted to bring it to your attention. And that's, I see an operational conflict in your grandfathering rules as written in the draft regulations. And here's the scenario. Someone goes out and drills a well in Weld County, unincorporated Weld County now, complies with all the setback rules that the state requires. Subsequent to that, someone builds a house within the setback limits. The state rules don't make any change on the operation of that well, the ability to go in and rework that well, do something in the future. The state's clear. It says at the time the well is drilled or when the facilities are set. The draft regulations that Longmont is proposing don't have that same grandfathering against subsequent development. So in the scenario where someone has drilled a well in Weld County, subsequent development has encroached within that setback limit, and now that property is annexed into Longmont, any activity done on that well is going to subject that operator in that well to the city's rules. But it will be a practical impossibility at that point to live with the setback rule. So, you know, most businesses are aware that regulations evolve and usually have a forum in which to debate them and then put your two cents in. But in this case, this operator is not a participant because he's not been on an annexed piece of land yet. So something outside his awareness takes place and drops in his lap upon annexation. And for someone in Weld County, you don't know whether that's going to be rules that Longmont writes, or Mead writes, or Firestone writes. And I think that's sort of the trucks of why House Bill 1277 was a bad bill, because people don't know what to expect, they don't know what the rules could be. And so I think it's something you should correct in your rules, the draft rules, address it so you don't have a conflict down the road and spend time in litigation that you could avoid. I've marked up a set of the rules with a couple of language changes and get into whatever clerk you suggest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Teresa Foster, followed by Bob Norris.
My name's Teresa Foster, and good evening, council, Mayor Protan Santos, and Mayor Coombs. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Don Colson, who is kind enough to stay home and leave his germs there because he's too sick to be here tonight.
Can you state your address too, please, Teresa?
Don Colson's address is 341 Grant Street.
But I think we need yours.
Oh, okay, 712 Thornwood Way.
Thank you.
I still live there. On February 10th, the Idaho House Resource and Conservation Committee voted unanimously to limit local government's authority over oil and gas drilling. The 16-0 industry-sponsored bill prohibits local governments from passing ordinances to limit activity within their jurisdictions. Similar bills are moving through several fracking states, and even though a bill of a similar nature was recently defeated in the Colorado Legislature, there is little doubt it will reappear under a new name cloaked in some friendly sounding spin. States with fracking operations are all under huge pressure from the oil and gas industry, and you can be sure that with the billions of dollars at stake, politicians at every level of government are feeling the heat. Last November, when you were installed in the present council, not one of you, to my knowledge, uttered a peep about fracking and the present controversy because the issue had not been raised. But had any one of you openly supported the fracking industry back then, it would have opened up a Pandora's Box, and I doubt you'd be seated here today. For the overwhelming majority of Longmont citizens who are knowledgeable of this issue oppose it vehemently, and why would we not be concerned with the potential for water contamination, foul air, and a way of life turned upside down because an industry with big bucks decides it's moving in? By the time you check your email inbox, each of you will find a link to a video entitled "Fracking Hell," which tells the tale of a small town in Pennsylvania which will slowly and surely dry up and blow away from the enormous increase of fracking-related traffic and a deteriorating quality of life. Giant trucks running 24/7 up and down Main Street delivering the millions of gallons of water needed in the drilling process, a quietly deteriorating quality of life and a new population of workers who will disappear once the wells are operational. Citizens in Pennsylvania town are alarmed at the potential contamination of their water supply, deteriorating vistas, the chemical-laden dust, and the increasingly foul air. Those who can are moving out, and no one except the oil and gas workers are moving in to what was once a bucolic town. Life is changing in this little town, just as it will in Longmont, unless you, our community leaders, step up to the plate and lead the charge. Longmont may in the short term see an increase in business and apartment rentals, but remember, a well may require 120 workers to drill and bring it online, but only one to maintain it after it starts producing. You, council, owe it to your constituents to do everything possible to fight for Longmont. You owe it to the citizens to extend the present moratorium another six months. You owe it to us to reach out to other front-range community leaders and plan how together you can impact and influence what's happening in the state legislature, for you will not win this battle alone. Let me restate that. You will not win this battle alone. You owe it to your community to not roll over, but to stand and fight for what will surely be the defining moment in the history of Longmont. In the memorable words of Margaret Thatcher, "This is no time to go wobbly." Please remember these words as you search for answers. Your community is behind you. Please don't let us down. Thanks.
Thank you, Teresa. Bob Norris, followed by Mark White.
Mayor, Mayor Protan. Council members. I'm Bob Norris. Live at 532 Ryder Ridge Drive here in Longmont. You should have some sympathy for me. I spent eight hours at the Capitol yesterday. I hand it to the people that make a living down there. It's a tough place. Anyway, what I'm here to talk to you about tonight is the Colorado Asset Bill, which you're all probably fairly familiar with, but I just wanted to mention some of the highlights. What the Colorado Asset Bill do will let students without documentation have access to colleges here in Colorado, not for the in-state tuition, but for what, another tuition that doesn't have the COF money in it. In other words, about $1,800 a year or more. And, you know, various institutions have supported that. CU for this first time supports it, but I'm guessing even with the in-state tuition, it's probably out of reach for most people unless they have scholarships. And, and for most of us, we probably know some students that are affected by this, and for those of us that work to help students get scholarships, we know that scholarship money doesn't go very far, so it does help with the scholarship programs too. In order for a student to qualify, he has to have spent or attended Colorado public or private schools for a minimum of three years, and has to apply within 12 months of graduation, which is a change from the previous rules. The other thing that's good to know about is that the bill will actually create revenue for Rattles Colleges and Universities because an empty seat doesn't get any revenue. So if you've got students coming in and paying the in-state tuition plus the COF money, that's money to go to the schools. And as I said, as you regions, this, your, have supported it, as has the Community Colleges Association of Colorado, whatever they, they call themselves, as well as a number of school districts. St. Varane School District is, is supporting it again based on the resolution that they passed unanimously last year. And, you know, other people look at this in terms of what, what does it mean for the kids and around them? Because a lot of kids, and I know kids that didn't know that they didn't have documentation or are U.S. citizens until they went to get a driver's license. And so that's kind of a shock for them. And then some of those kids have been working very hard in school. Now they kind of lose their incentive, and instead of being a real good role model for the other students, maybe they're kind of goofing off more like some of us did when we were in school. So anyway, I was just trying to inform you and the public that I, I support this bill, and maybe next week I'll come and talk to you about a wage-staff bill that's gone through the Legislature. Denver, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mark White, followed by Eugene Disler.
Mark White, 1917 Garden Wall Way, and I'm speaking for Barbara Fernandez of the same address. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I have been studying the draft rules since they were issued, and I'm not clear about the main thrust of the rules. The incentive voluntary process, my concern is that the company doesn't want to use the recommended process that will go through the full review. But during the full review, which standards rule is it is a weekend setback standards and other weak specifications for state rules. If so, we haven't granted, we haven't gained anything. In addition, I feel that there are so many questions about the draft rules, it would be wise to extend the moratorium. There will, there not only are questions about the rules, but the, but the recent revelations about wells. For example, I live in Spring Valley Estates, and there have been info stating that there are abandoned wells in that subdivision. I have reviewed the planned unit development for the subdivision, and, and nowhere does it document these, these wells. I have been unable to verify from the city that they, that they are condemned wells and mineral lease for the subdivision. We have talked to our insurance agent, we have gone, we have contacted the title company, and the title company, when they go through and find out what's recorded, they go for what is actually recorded with the, with the county. These wells do not come up. The POD documents should have been mentioned, should have mentioned the wells. So I'm wondering what the city's liability is if that, if the land is annexed and the subdivisions in Longmont approved. These PODs then never mention the well mineral situation, and it seems to me that the city has a lot more homework to do on that issue. Now, this is from mine. I understand that there was a, there was a master plan, and the master plan was to have open space around the city. This, the council very quickly sued Firestone over getting open space. But apparently the CLGCC is here to keep, keep us in line and threaten lawsuits. Now, I don't understand. On one situation, you're, you're anxious to go to court for open space, but yet you won't be bold to try to push, push back and afraid to go to, go to court. So if you won't do that, I ask you at least get with the CLGCC and coordinate watching over the wells.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Gene Disler, followed by Danielle Wingold.
Hi, I'm Gene Disler, 1541 Tucker Drive. And thank you, Mary, Mayor, Mary. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And I want to start off by thanking the city staff who, in what turned out to be a very short period of time, made some, some headway with the oil and gas regulation. And then I want to speak about something else. Over the past several months, it's been brought to my attention several times that drilling has occurred near homes and schools without citizens getting up in arms about it. I've heard it's happening in the cities of Frederick and Firestone, and we don't hear them complaining. I've spoken to friends in those cities and asked them about this disparity in my feelings towards potential drilling and their reality, which, by the way, isn't necessarily a pretty one. This is what I've come to understand. They don't have expectations for their city to protect them. They don't have expectations for their city to do much of anything. They don't feel connected to their cities. Here in Longmont, it's different. It's better. The city and the citizens of this town have worked very hard at maintaining a small-town feel as the city has grown in population and area. The city has involved the community in many of its planning decisions, encouraging the citizens with easy avenues for a citizens with easy avenues for a voice, buy-in, and connection with the final results. This has resulted in citizens feeling a bond with the city. Even the marketing campaign, "You belong in Longmont," speaks to that. Our collective efforts have made Longmont a community that stands out from other communities, an all-American city, a bike-friendly city, with beautiful parks, good schools, a charming downtown, and low crime rates. Unfortunately, you've set a precedent that we have, as citizens, have come to expect. So I urge you to extend the moratorium by six months. Get proper citizen input and buy-in. Get proper committee input and buy-in, and take the time to ensure that these regulations deliver on the promise you've made to the citizens of Longmont. The promise you've carefully, deliberately delivered on over the course of many, many years. The promise to be more than and better than. This city council has a choice whether to extend the moratorium and tell the citizens, "We are listening, we are working with you towards the best solutions to keep Longmont an amazing community," or to adopt these regulations prematurely and tell the citizens, "Get this over with. We're not strong enough to deliver on the promise of community any longer." Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Danielle Weingold, followed by Marilyn Hughes.
Hi, I'm Danielle Weingold. I live at 627 Glen Arbor Circle, and like my neighbor from Garden Wall, that's in Yoot Creek Golf Course. I'm no expert on fracking, this is all kind of new to me, but I looked at the red zone map, and I noticed that there are three abandoned sites right in my neighborhood. So one is about five houses down from mine, another one about 10 houses down. And then if you look, the nearest potential drilling site is at Rough and Ready Park, which is maybe four blocks from there. And then research shows that there's, what do they call, communication between new drill sites and abandoned drill sites. And I was asking that you extend the moratorium so that we could find out how to mitigate risks that there could be unintentional fracking products released into my neighborhood and other areas. There's another site like that over on Ninth Street by the school, where there's an abandoned drill site, and then proposed drilling areas just across the street or just across the field. So I, as a resident, don't feel like I have enough information that I don't have to feel like there's not going to be some inadvertent fracking coming up in my basement or something like that. I know it sounds crazy, but there's videos of it on YouTube. I didn't, you know, become an expert on fracking or anything, but it's scary. And I'd like you to extend the moratorium so that everybody feels confident that we know there's a low risk to our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Marilyn Hughes, followed by Tom Seaman.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Marilyn Hughes, 1126 Fourth Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on a very important topic on the agenda tonight. Reading over the draft oil and gas regulations, there was a number of standards that I appreciated, and I wanted to commend the Planning Department and their work. I have a few suggestions, however. Setbacks for high-density areas are better than 350 feet, but still pretty close if you're talking about someone's home or school. Air quality monitoring seems vague with no requirements stated in any explicit fashion, and nowhere did I see that proof of ownership of mineral rights was required. I realize this document is a draft, and that changes, additions, and strengthening may still occur. What was most striking to me, however, was how complicated writing good regulation is. I feel our city is likely facing extensive requests for drilling, since we sit on the Niobrara shale. I also realize that we, as a community, are ahead of the C O G C C in terms of the strength of regulations that we would like. For these reasons, it makes sense to extend the moratorium for another six months. The more you study and research information about drilling and fracking, the more you see that there's a lot of information that is contradictory and unclear. Again, please consider carefully an extension of the moratorium. In closing, I testified at the hearing yesterday in support of House Bill 1277. Representative Matt Jones did an excellent job of explaining his bill and answering the committee's questions. More than 30 people signed up in favor of the bill. They had to move us to a larger room. The majority of those people were citizens who wanted to see more local control of oil and gas regulation. Seven people spoke in opposition to the bill, and they were primarily oil and gas industry representatives. Apparently, among the industry, there was some concern about this bill. If this was a toothless bill, the industry did not seem to see it that way. They presented what I would characterize as a full-court press. I was left at the end of the four-and-a-half-hour hearing with the distinct feeling that if we want to protect Longmont citizens' health and safety while dealing with the realities of energy production, it's up to us, the citizens, and you, our representatives, to do it. And I believe we need more time. Please extend the moratorium.
Thank you, Marilyn. Tom Seaman, followed by Chris Porzuchak.
Hi, Tom Seaman, 12566 County Road 1. Mayor Coombs and council, good to see you guys again. I had the opportunity to go to the Planning and Zoning meeting last Wednesday and watch the proceedings there, along with Alex. What I heard was Commissioner Pierce bring forth a motion to extend the moratorium, and her reasons were simply that she felt there was a lot of distrust between citizens and C O G C C and the drilling companies. And of course, one thing that's come out that all of us have seen is just the overwhelming amount of wells that are being drilled right now, and just the understaffing of this commission. And I think even at the state level, I've been hearing last Tuesday that was brought up. And so just for that reason, I would just agree with her and the vote of the Planning and Zoning, as they've recommended to you guys to extend the moratorium, so I just put in my two cents, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Porzuchak, followed by Kay Fissinger.
Evening. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Chris Porzuchak, 12624 Weld County Road 1. I think the staff did do a great job putting this together as quickly as they did, so thank you for that. I will say, I'm pretty scared, though, ultimately, after trying to work the avenues of going through the state and through this process, I still don't feel like I'm going to be able to be protected at my house. I don't know that, it's just scary. There's going to be 100 wells within two miles, mile and a half of my house, and I don't feel like they're protecting me. So I feel obligated to move my family. I feel obligated to sell my house, because I think that once that rig goes up, it's going to be on that side of town for, what, three years? Going from one side of the lake to the other, up and down County Line Road, all over that side of town. I'm concerned about my property values, I'm concerned about the health of my kid. I'm not going to sit here and talk to you about specific regulation, because I think there's so much that we do need the six-month extension to talk a little bit more about it. I'm just telling you, I'm scared. I tried to go to the state, I don't feel any response there. It's too political, way too political. One of the gentlemen gave his response that was just disgusting, in that he wouldn't support the bill because three years ago, there were some people that were supporting the C O G C C, and he just didn't feel like, he felt like it would be flip-flopping. And I said, well, you know, there's a lot of new information that the C O G C C is pretty inept, and, you know, he didn't, actually, he wasn't even there because he wasn't part of the hearing. He didn't want to hear what most of the people said. So he wasn't there when some of this was being presented, which is part of the reason that I'm really disgusted and scared about where this industry is going, and then how they just feel like they can steamroll over a city like ours. They can steamroll over the people, and really, it's all in the name of jobs, but they're compromising as many as they're bringing. I can guarantee you that. And I think over the next 10 years, well, let's just say I'm willing to bet my livelihood, I bought this place 10 years ago, and I'm willing to walk away from it, because I'm willing to bet that this is a bad deal. I'm scared. I plan on living there for 20 years, and I'm willing to bet the last 10 years of investment for the next 20 to go somewhere else besides where I live and find a new home that I can raise my family safely. So please extend the six-month moratorium. I think there's a lot to be, more to be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Kay Fissinger, followed by Jake Madder.
Kay Fissinger, 2199 Creekside Drive. Article 20 of the Colorado Constitution reserves both structural and functional home rural powers to municipalities and the full right of self-government in local and municipal matters to citizens. Home rule is the embodiment of the principle that the best government is the one that is closest to the people. Article 20 grants both general and specific powers to home-rural municipalities, providing them greater flexibility when seeking solutions to local problems. These powers allow home-rural municipalities to shape such solutions to fit local needs. Home-rural municipalities are not required to follow state statutes in matters of local and municipal concern, and therefore enjoy freedom from state interference. The statements I just made appeared in an overview of home rule prepared by the Colorado Municipal League. Longmont is a home-rural municipality. The Colorado Constitution was amended in 1902, over a century ago, to allow for home rule. In 1912, a clarifying and strengthening amendment rewrote Section 6 of Article 20 to specifically enumerate various municipal home-rural powers. The Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Act was passed in 1951. Its legislative declaration states that the act is "to foster responsible, balanced development, production, and utilization of the natural resources of oil and gas in the state of Colorado in a manner consistent with the protection of public health, safety, and welfare, including protection of the environment and wildlife resources." I submit to you that the administering agency of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission has failed and is continuing to fail in its directive. I submit to you that its actions reflect consistent mission creep and are, in fact, unbalanced and consistently elevate the desires of the oil and gas industry over and above the requirements for public health, safety, and welfare, including the protection of the environment and wildlife resources. I submit to you further that this lack of balance is irresponsible. The Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Act is a legislative enactment, and as such, there is no constitutional protection afforded the oil and gas industry by virtue of this act, and that legislation cannot override the constitutional guarantees of Article 20. If this was the legislature's intent, it had 60 years to amend the state constitution to rescind the right of municipal home rule. It has not done so, nor is it the prerogative of the Colorado courts to effectively amend the constitution when the legislature and/or the voting public have failed to do so. In the light of the foregoing regulation of the impacts of oil and gas operations by the C O G C C are in addition to, not a replacement of the powers granted to home-rural municipalities by the Constitution of the state of Colorado. Consequently, an extension of the moratorium and adoption of the most stringent regulations is necessary and appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Jake Madder, followed by Elizabeth Olsen.
Good evening. My name is Jake Madder. I'm an Assistant Attorney General. I represent the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. My business address is 1525 Sherman Street. I'm here just to discuss a few things. Some of my letters to other local governments have been attached to the various packets before this board and the Planning Commission, and I'm not going to beat the preemption drum, but I want to tell you why the C O G C C feels it's important to raise those sorts of issues. I've heard a lot about what the commission is and how it's evolved over time. One of the primary ways it's evolved is in 2008, in response to various legislative changes by the General Assembly instructing the commission to give greater emphasis to the environment and public health issues. In 2008, it amended its rules and regulations through an epic rulemaking process that has been heralded nationally as the most progressive oil and gas commission in the country. In fact, it was sued by the oil and gas industry, claiming that those rules would be impossible to comply with. So the, another thing to keep in mind is that the commission faces, it does have a tough job to balance development, to balance environmental concerns, health concerns, but to also ensure that mineral interest donors have the ability to extract their resources while balancing the rights of surface owners. So it has a tough job, and that's the tough job that the General Assembly has given it to do. The 2008 regulations were a product of a consensus-building process, compromise. Numerous stakeholders participated in that process, and they reflect fairness. And when local governments modify the rules and regulations that were passed in 2008, someone loses, and that disrupts the fairness that was established throughout that 2008 I don't have time to discuss in detail certain amounts of the preemptive regulations, but I compliment your staff, and Mr. May in particular, because we've had a great dialogue, and I expect that to continue into the future. But I want to talk briefly about potential solutions and ways to ensure certainty at the local level. One process is through the local governmental process, the local governmental designee, who can work collaboratively and cooperatively with the C O G C C to attach specific conditions of approval to every permit. The rules and regulations of the C O G C C apply statewide. That's the baseline. The heightened standards come in the form of conditions of approval, which are oftentimes very specific to each particular location. There are other ways to ensure certainty, too. Local government can contract with operators to meet some of the issues that you're facing in these proposed regulations, which may be problematic or preemptive. For example, Longmont can negotiate with operators to ensure any number of provisions of concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake. Elizabeth Olsen, followed by Kate Johnson.
I might have to move this down a little bit. Okay. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Olsen. Thank you for listening to everybody here. This is my son Levi Kuklaskis. We live at 1201 South Kimbark Street in Longmont, and I'm here tonight just because, similar to some of the other speakers, I'm feeling really afraid and actually quite helpless in this situation. I'm feeling like decisions are getting made at a state level that aren't really taking into account what people in our local communities actually want. And I've also just been disturbed, I have a lot of, you know, friends that are Democrats that are liberal, who when I mention the word fracking to them here in Longmont, they have no idea what it means or what it is. And I feel like this is moving at a very quick pace without really including the feedback, the education, and the input from a lot of the people in this community. And it feels like once this ball gets rolling, it's going to be in motion, and it sounds like there's going to be potential serious health ramifications for people. I'm concerned to hear that there's red zones near neighborhoods, near schools for children, that this could contaminate our drinking water. And I just am really employing you all to please protect the people here in Longmont, and to do what you can to fight. I mean, I was listening to this gentleman here, and he was talking about balance, and I agree, I think that's a great idea, and I hope that part of the balance is including things like having more protections of where this is going to happen, if it's going to happen. Can we please be more careful to protect the children, to protect the families, the parks, the neighborhoods where people are living, the water that we're all drinking? So I think that's mainly what I wanted to say. I would really like to employ you to please extend the moratorium and protect the families of Longmont like you've been asked to do in your jobs here. So please take more time to collect more information, and to please educate the community more, and listen more, give us more time to organize and to talk about what these ramifications could be for the health, because I would hate to see this ball get rolling and people in our community be negatively impacted by this. So I really hope you'll listen seriously to what we're asking you to consider tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I just, thank you, Elizabeth.
Oh, sure.
And Kate Johnson, followed by David Pilster.
I'm Kate Johnson. I live at 11227 North 66th Street. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I attended the community open house on February 6, which was- I attended the community open house on February 6, which was the first chance the public had to begin to weigh in on the city's approach to oil and gas regulations. At that time, however, neither the public nor the advisory boards had seen the draft regulations because they weren't completed yet, so essentially, we got to answer a few questions about our wishes but couldn't actually give input on the proposed regulations. Following the open house, the advisory boards met and unanimously recommended that the city's moratorium be extended, given all the complexities involved. Last week, I attended the planning and zoning meeting on Wednesday and listened to Brian Schumacher and the commissioners try to work through the draft regulations. I applauded their effort, but I was struck by how many questions there still were and how many times the answers were along the lines of, "I'm not sure, that's something we'd want to consider," and so on. Clearly, the draft regulations were only at the beginning stages, and there still were many unknowns. That was six days ago. At the end of that meeting, although the planning and zoning commissioners approved the draft regulations in their current form, they also voted in favor of requesting an extension of the moratorium. The point being, the process has just begun, and much more time is needed to get it right. In their current form, the regulations do not effectively protect our parks, golf courses, water resources, open spaces, recreational areas, schools, cemeteries, and neighborhoods. Over the past months, you've been hearing testimony, watching videos, and generally getting bombarded with information about the potential risks and harm involved with this new wave of fracking that is at our doorstep. At the same time, you've been getting pressure from COGCC and other interested oil and gas parties to back off from setting regulations that would ensure your community's health and well-being. Understandably, you'd probably like to be done with the whole process and move on to something else, perhaps something easier. But this issue is far too important to rush through. The risks of fracking are real. The risks of pushing back against COGCC are real, and it's complicated. The only risk-free option right now, that even your city attorney agrees is risk-free, is to extend the moratorium and take the time to do the process justice. I urge you to do that tonight. But I'd like to take it one step further and urge you to use the time of an extended moratorium, not only to more thoroughly consider the best regulatory approach and to make sure the public has adequate time and opportunity to give feedback, but I'd also like to see you use that forum to explore options for invoking home rule, to make sure no large-scale heavy industrialized fracking occur within our city limits. Instead of saying your hands are tied, start figuring out how to untie them. You do actually have options, and the stakes have never been higher. Thank you.
Thank you. David Pelster, followed by Jeff Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, fellow city council members. My name is David Pelster. I live at 1574 Gosock Drive. I have to start by saying that I'm actually very disappointed in my city council. I've gone to the Capitol twice in the past five days and testified at Senate Bill 88 hearing, as well as House Bill 1277. Thank goodness, Senate Bill 88 failed. It would have completely taken away all of our local rights for any sort of regulation. However, especially House Bill 1277, I would have loved to have your support. I think it would have made a big difference. I saw Commerce City Mayor Proton there, and he was voicing that he would like to have more control. Unfortunately, at our state level, it is a partisan issue. I don't know why, but it is, and there are more bills that are going to come down the line. In fact, the bill, House Bill 1277, if it gets introduced, the same bill gets introduced in the Senate, I am very confident will pass and make it out of committee and make it to the General Assembly because partisan, it's just the break between Democrat and Republican. I do hope that if it gets introduced in the Senate, that I can have your support there. It would be a great boon to our community. Then I want to speak on fairness. We heard the COGCC rep here talk about fairness. Tell me, how is an open pit next to our school, next to my house fair? It's not fair at all. They can still obtain their minerals without having an open pit. Not fair. The last thing I want to mention is that I would really like to see the city council extend the moratorium. When you see my family and see my kids, then you can look them in the eye and say, "I did everything I could in my power." Do the best you can do. If you extend the moratorium, I will believe that you did the best that you could do. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Jeff Thompson, followed by Joe Bassman.
Jeff Thompson, 1616 Sunner Street. Mayor, I hope this is on television tonight because I want everybody in Longmont to know that they're being fed a whole lot of legal hogwash to make them believe that this city council does not have the power to protect their bodily health. What the attorney, the Assistant Attorney General, who spoke on behalf of the Oil and Gas Commission, he talked about balancing our health concerns with the concerns of the oil companies. That's outrageous. There's nothing in the law that says our health concerns, our bodies should be balanced with the interests of the oil companies. That was just incredibly misleading, what he said. The Oil and Gas Commission has a duty under the law to protect our health, period. And their regulations are invalid if they don't protect our health. And all this talk about smokescreen, all this talk about preemption is impertinent. That's not the issue, because to get to the issue of preemption, you have to have a valid Oil and Gas Commission regulation. And what all this hubbub is about is the Oil and Gas Commission is basically acting illegal. I would say it's corrupt, terribly corrupt. They aren't protecting our health. They aren't doing what the state legislature told them they should do. And so, that leaves it open for us to protect our health. Now, Mayor, it's time for you and the city council to stand and deliver tonight, and you tell us, what are the volatile organic compounds? How are they measured? What are the safe levels? And then, based on that, what should these setbacks be? Your packet is basically to sandbag the city council and sandbag the people of Longmont. It's over 300 pages long, and I went through it, and it doesn't even come close to those questions. It is just a bunch of garbage to make us think that Gordon P. Bro and his staff are doing their jobs, and they haven't even started. They haven't done anything. Because those questions that I just asked aren't answered, and there's a lot of other questions about diesel, and a lot of other things I could bring up.
Thank you, Jeff. Joe Bassman, followed by Shelley Bassman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Joe Bassman. I live at 3414 Lakeview Circle, where I'm the owner of the surface rights. I don't say that in jest. I say that with much emphasis. I'm the owner of the surface rights. I don't know about the mineral rights. I don't know that anybody fully understands who owns the mineral rights. I do know that claims can be made about the mineral rights under my home that might not have to be proved, that allow them to be drilled and mined. I do know, and I think most people will agree with me, that the owner of the surface rights is really not going to be in favor of oil and gas drilling and mining within our city, in a city like Longmont, in our parks, in our cemeteries, in our open spaces, in our lakes. I do believe that there's much information that's going to come out in the very near future. For one, we're going to find a much more realistic analysis of the evidence of groundwater contamination incidents. And I truly believe, this is not a scare tactic, I truly believe, and I think people should listen closely, that within a few years, Union Reservoir will be quarantined and off-limits, not only to people but to dogs. We're talking about hundreds of wells going on out there by one of the notoriously worst operators that we've come across, that oil leaks, leaks from oil wells are going to be in excess of 30% when this information comes out. That's a lot of oil wells that are going to be leaking. We know of two in the area that are leaking already. This is really a serious matter that can turn our comprehensive planning absolutely upside down. Regarding the COGCC, let me just point out two things. It has conservation in its name and conservation in its mission. Please download the entire regulations, put it into a PDF, and do a search on the word "conservation," and you'll find that there's one and only one regulation regarding conservation. And that is a voluntary regulation, and it has to do with recommending that the workers at an oil well site do not feed the wildlife. One other thing I suggest you try, look up on Google and look for the most stringent requirements in the United States, and you'll find that there are at least six other states that claim that distinction. Finally, I ask with you, I ask, don't ever throw away public hearings or for the ability for the public to appeal on any single well. Finally, I'm not asking for a moratorium. I'm asking for a six-month moratorium, and I think you should not be trying to lessen that, but rather, you should be talking to the city attorney to see what can be done to lengthen that amount of time. Every single day that we get gives us another day for the use of Union Reservoir, and I'd like to be able to utilize this summer surfboarding out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Shelley Bassman.
I'm Shelley Bassman, and I share the surface rights with Joe at 3414 Lakeview Circle in Longmont. There was an eloquent speakers tonight. I'm interested in Frederick. What do you call that? Gestalt? That it's a town that nobody really feels connected to, and it's been drilled to pieces. I was at the P&amp;Z Commission. I just need to correct something that I heard there. One commissioner thought, he thought he knew, that setpacts from oil and gas wells were for aesthetics reasons, and I wish to make it clear that it's for health, safety, and welfare reasons, and that the Oil and Gas Commission is, their number feet is woefully inadequate to accomplish that. Also, the P&amp;Z Committee, TOP, wanted to make, straighten out the record, and I wish to correct their straightening. It's true that in 1995, at the Ryder One, TOP cleaned up the unlined open pit, and it was cleaned up up to specs. They got a letter from the COGCC that said, "Good job." And if in the future it ever turns up some problems there, you will be responsible for cleaning them up. Now, you can fast forward to 2006, and problems were found. And mind you, it's the surface owner that has to pay to go and have their surface checked for what an oil company did to it. And benzene was found at almost 500 times, no, 5 milligrams per liter is the max for benzene, and it was 491. And that is a strict requirement because benzene is particularly harmful, toxic to people's health. It took TOP six years strong-arming the Oil and Gas Commission. Just recently, benzene is down to five parts per million. I don't know about the targeting, and I don't know if the COGC or anyone is going to make that same statement, if it should ever come back, not meeting standards, that they will be required, and I don't trust the COGCC to say that. Longmont needs to say it. Focus on Longmont, said that our citizens' top priority is protecting the environment. And our comprehensive plan envisions, does not envision heavy industrial oil and gas development, it's not development, it's hazardous, toxic, heavy industrial. We need to lengthen the moratorium by six months so that we can address these and Spring Valley problems and a whole bunch before we set sail on this new journey.
Is there anyone else in the audience you'd like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one, I will, all right.
Thank you, Mayor, Congressman, or council members. My name is Sarah Langer. I'm with the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. My working address is 1660 Lincoln Avenue. I want to first acknowledge the gravity of this decision that is before you, and clearly it elicits a very emotional response, and we want to help work with you to clear up some of the misinformation and help open the lines of communication. We've been talking with some of the staff about having meetings with the operators, with the service companies. Just get the lines of communication open, and I'm not going to, you know, Jake Matter talked about this. In 2008, Colorado did pass the most comprehensive drilling regulations in the entire country. These are regulated by experts, and so it's just not practical to have Colorado have this patchwork of regulations. It's a real disadvantage for investment and for economic development. This is a very real challenge for our state. The rules as proposed, although presented as voluntary, are simply preempted by the state. However, the concerns that the staff has addressed in these regulations can be handled through the LGD process. This is something that just recently through legislation, they're going to hire two new liaisons to help with this. The community needs can be addressed, and there can be continued economic prosperity. I just want to update you on the history of other counties that are dealing with this. Arapahoe and El Paso have both rejected the rules within the past month and have agreed to work through the LGD process. Albert County has done the same. Douglas County has sent staff back to the drawing board. We really encourage the LGD process. It's set up very well. There's going to be these liaisons. I think it's great. And Koga really looks forward to working with the council as needed, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Guess I'll close the public invited to be heard.
Thank you, Mayor. Strider Benston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue, Longmont, City Council. I appreciate hearing all the input and the research people have been doing, but as we know, much of the data is contradictory or at least contentious and far from completed. We desperately need that extra six-month moratorium. I would just like to point out one thing. Yesterday, I believe it's the National Geological Society published a study done right here in Boulder County, taking the air samples of the methane leaks, and the oil and gas industry has indicated a maximum of 2% contamination, maximum of 2%, and generally far less than that. The actual measurements that were taken, not really with looking to take a side on this particular issue, but just generally doing their scientific work, and they will build more towers and do more measurements when they get targeted more, or if there's funding, you know who's defunding the government. But they found that the levels were from 2% to 8%. In other words, on the average, more than four times higher than the gas industry has acknowledged, and this is methane. Methane is 20 to 80 times more dangerous than CO2 for climate change pollution, and that is, I'm sure that would be contentious. Let's study it. We need the six-month moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider.
Mayor Coombs, council members, my name is Daria Laverne. I live at 429 Emery Street. I would like to ask for an extension of six months in addition to the four-month moratorium. United we stand, divided we fall. There may be other communities doing what we're doing, but we're coming together, and we plan on making sure that our health, safety, and well-being is taken care of. is taken care of. The council has that opportunity to do that with a six-month extension. I would just like to say that, as my, as my understanding is, Colorado Constitution preempts anything that any company can try to say as preemption over us. We have the right to home rule, and we have the right to protect our children, our families, our property, our environment, so please consider extending the extension, the moratorium by six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Tiger?
Greetings, Paul Tiger, 452 Dixon. I thought there was an oil and gas hearing going on here, and I actually wasn't publicly invited to be heard. I dug out of the cloud this email that Mike sent back to me about the issue that I addressed the council in an email. And I want to be quite clear here that I wasn't asking council to make marijuana legal. I, I actually don't understand, I think there's some grammatical problems with the email coming back to me, and I'll discuss that with Mike, find out where he was coming from. What I'm asking here is, is there's a disparity of economics here and injustice, and that is that we have people here in town who can sell a product to anyone, who can then be ticketed for then having it. And that's what I'm asking you to look into. That's all. It doesn't have to do with the legalization of marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right. I will close the public invited to be heard. Gordon, you wanna go ahead?
Mayor and council, Brian Schumacher will make the presentation on this draft oil and gas regulations that's before you tonight.
Okay. Can we take a, we'll take a five-minute break first?[718.32]
Go ahead, Brian.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Brian Schumacher with Economic Development. Good evening. With me this evening are some of the members of our working group, staff, that we have been looking at researching regulations and putting together the draft for your consideration, as well as the review by the Plan Zoning Commission last week as well. And so as part of the presentation this evening, at your desk, you were handed out copies of the slides for the presentation, as well as yet some more maps. Hopefully those copies of the maps provide a little bit better contrast in terms of the maps that were in your packet to distinguish between areas that are buffered as opposed to potential drillable areas. And I'll talk about those in a little more detail as we go through the presentation. So I'll be providing an overview. Don's going to help me a little bit with the slides and also help me responding to questions that I may not be able to. And then Eugene May is going to follow that up with a few comments regarding some different options and avenues that we may want to explore as well. So with that, if we could get the slide on, that'd be great. Oh, thanks. So anyway, I'm going to go through this fairly quickly since some of you may have seen the Plan Zoning Commission presentation. This covers some of that information. There's a little bit of new information incorporated as well. In terms of the schedule, we're currently about halfway through the current 120-day moratorium. That was approved for December 20th through April 17th. We've had the joint board meeting in an open house on February 6th, as well as the review by the Plan Zoning Commission last week on February 15th. So this is council's initial review on the draft regulations. Just briefly, in terms of the public open house and the joint boards meeting on February 6th, we provided an overview of the oil and gas rigs update process. Unfortunately, at that time, we didn't have the rigs ready, but we did go through and kind of hit some of the topics and issues that we were reviewing as we were in the process of drafting the regulations. And we also took time to ask questions, some survey questions of the public, as well as the boards regarding some of their preferences, regarding certain issues and topics. And in terms of responses, generally, they were fairly consistent with the support for the city going beyond the minimum requirements. And then the environmental protection and setback areas were considered to be the most important areas of concern of the survey question. So this slide is just one of the slides in terms of one of the questions that were asked at the open house and the joint boards meeting. And that's the last one of this document comparing the survey response questions. That was the supplemental information that was provided in your communication. But again, this one just highlights the areas of importance where the open house participants, as well as the joint board members, were asked to highlight their top three areas of concern with regard to drafting the regulations. As you can see, closed-loop systems, monitoring for air and water quality, setbacks, green fracking fluids, and inspections were the top areas. With respect to the last week's Plan Zoning Commission hearing, we did receive a substantial amount of input from the public, industry, as well as representative from the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission at that hearing, as well as what you've heard this evening, the Plan Zoning Commission voted four to three to recommend approval of draft regulations without changes. They also voted four to three to recommend that council extend the moratorium. With respect to oil and gas activity in Longmont, there's currently 12 existing producing wells within the city limits. 10 of those on city-owned property. All but one are in East County Line Road. And I'll show you a map in a second about that. In terms of drilling activities, since the city adopted regulations in 2000, we've had one well that has actually two wells have gone through the process, one that was drilled. They were both out of Sandstone Ranch, the Evans 6 and Evans 8 wells. With the city acquisition of open space properties in and around Union Reservoir and Sandstone Ranch, in the what's referred to as the Greater Wattenberg Field. And with those acquisitions, there's been existing wells and mineral rights that have been leased previously prior to the city's acquisition of those properties. So there's been some interest with respect to new drilling on the city-owned properties, as well as other properties in the surrounding area. So that's one of the reasons why we're here this evening is to present options to city council with respect to the draft regulations. This map just provides a quick overview of where a lot of the drilling activities occurred in the state of Colorado. And Don can maybe show you with the cursor on the screen, the Greater Wattenberg area, which is the large blob off to the north and east of Longmont. And you can see clearly it's kind of in the middle there that Don's pointing to currently. There's also some other areas of concentration in southern Colorado and southwestern Colorado where a lot of oil and gas activity has occurred. This map shows the Wattenberg Field, and each of the dots on the map represent an oil or gas well. And then this map shows some of the oil and gas wells in the Longmont area. As I noted, almost all of the gas wells that are currently within the city limits are East County Line Road, and the vast majority of those are on city-owned property. This is just a couple of pictures of the existing well that was approved by the Plan Zoning Commission in 2004, and it was drilled in 2005. It's the Evans 6 well out of Sandstone Ranch. So this is a single well, and then the production facilities are off a little bit of a distance from the existing well location. And then the next picture, these are not within the city of Longmont, they're adjacent to, they're on the what's referred to as the Fairview property in Firestone, just east of the concept direct property. But this just shows a couple of photos of a consolidated location, a multi-well site, where I believe there's currently eight wells at this location. And you can see that there are six tanks and a variety of different production facilities out at this location as well. So you can kind of contrast that with the preceding pictures, which just shows a single well location. So obviously, this one has a little bit more impact in terms of the total footprint of a consolidated well site. In terms of preemption and local regulations, there's a lot of information in your packet. There's a summary narrative regarding the preemption issue, as well as copies of court cases regarding preemption. And we've summarized these and categorized these into three areas: likely preempted, uncertain if preempted, and not likely preempted. So in terms of areas where the courts have ruled, where local governments are likely preempted, these include a complete ban of drilling, setbacks, noise mitigation, visual impacts, fines and local enforcement of state rules, financial requirements for areas that are already covered by the state rules, and also inspection of records. Areas where it's uncertain whether there's preemption of local government regulations are things such as lighting, drilling and completion fracturing fluids, although that's an area that's more likely to be preempted than not, closed-loop pitless systems, water quality monitoring, and wildlife and habitat protection. And then those areas where local governments are considered to have authority and preemption is likely are things such as local government review, emergency response, transportation and access. So with respect to what's happening up and down along the Front Range and other areas of Colorado, there's been several other jurisdictions that have imposed moratoriums. El Paso County, just recently, their moratorium for four months expired when they adopted a scaled-down version of their regulations at the end of January. Commerce City is working on a 30-day rolling moratorium, where they're working with a variety of different interest groups to work through issues with respect to looking at potential regulations and/or other options that they're exploring. Colorado Springs and Boulder County have six-month moratoriums that are still in effect, and then Longmont's current moratorium as well. And then in addition to the moratoriums, there's a variety in this list, I'll go through the whole of them, but there's a variety of different communities that are exploring or have explored the option of updating their regulations. Also included in your packet, that was presented to the joint boards, as well as Plan Zoning Commission, was copies of letters from either the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission staff or the Attorney General's Office in response to draft regulations from four counties that had put forth draft regulations for public review. And those particular letters from the states highlighted areas where the state felt that the jurisdictions were either preempted or likely preempted in their draft regulations. And they offered up opportunities to work with the local jurisdictions, either through the local government designee process, adopting or discussing memorandums of agreement or understanding, and intergovernmental agreements, as well as area plan processes. And then recently announced, and there's going to be a meeting this coming Thursday, is a public stakeholders process to look at the issue regarding setbacks from buildings, which will be a multi-month process. I think that'll be looking at whether or not setbacks to buildings should be revised through a rulemaking process. As you're probably well aware, there's been several bills that have been introduced at the state legislature, and those are listed here. None so far have advanced out of committee. So I'll move on there. In terms of the city's existing regulations, they're adopted in 2000, and they address a variety of topics, but primarily they address visual impacts, as well as transportation impacts, and probably to a lesser extent nuisance and environmental impacts. And all applications for oil and gas are required to go through a conditional use process, which is a public hearing process that involves a neighborhood meeting, as well as a public hearing before the Plan Zoning Commission with an appeal to the city council. So skipping ahead then, that's just a kind of a brief overview. I'd like to talk next about the draft oil and gas regulations and provide an overview on that. When we're researching oil and gas regulations and putting together the draft regulations, there's a couple of guiding principles that we worked with. One was that the city of Longmont has a duty to protect the public health, safety, and welfare to the extent that is not preempted by state and federal law. And then the mineral leaseholder has a right to extract the minerals in a reasonable manner that does not adversely impact public health, safety, and welfare, as well as wildlife or the environment. When we discussed with council on December 20th about, provided a comparison of how our regulations stacked up with some of the other jurisdictions that either had adopted regulations previously or were considering adopting new regulations or updating regulations, council asked us to take a look at those areas where we had gaps in our regulations and to fill in those gaps to the extent that we could. So that was the process that we went through in terms of researching and updating the draft or providing the draft for review. So in terms of the areas in particular that we'll touch upon this evening are the review process, allowed and prohibited uses, zoning district restrictions, setbacks, visual mitigation, nuisance mitigation such as noise and lighting standards, environmental protection such as closed-loop systems, monitoring waste disposal of wildlife, and then infrastructure impacts regarding transportation impacts and access. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail unless council has specific questions, but some of the discussion topics that I'll briefly touch upon include the review process, both conditional and administrative review, zoning restrictions where surface operations would not be allowed in residential zoning districts, use restrictions in terms of prohibitions on waste facilities such as injection wells. Excuse me, Brian.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Could you go back two slides?
Yes.
And the question is more for Eugene than for you. We heard earlier tonight from a couple of speakers about our city's ability for self-rule and the constitutional rights that we have as a self-rule city, and the conflict between that and the COGCC. Could you clarify, from your perspective, what really is the definition of our self-rule compared to what the Constitution says versus what COGCC is interpreting as preempted?
Mayor, councilmember Samori, Eugene May, city attorney.
I'm not quite sure how to answer that. I mean, there is home rule authority granted to cities like Longmont that derives directly from the Constitution. The Supreme Court has laid out certain tests for determining how to resolve conflicts between differing levels of government. That's preemption. Certainly within matters of purely local concern, home rule authority is plenary that we are on par with the state legislature because our authority derives directly from the Constitution. In the area of oil and gas regulation, the courts have found that this is a matter of mixed local and state concern, that the local concern is land use control, but the state has a statewide interest in the development of the resource. And in those circumstances, it has developed a technical and operational conflict test that if the local regulation materially impedes, frustrates, or destroys the purpose of the state statute, that the local regulation will have to give way and is preempted by the state laws. Does that answer your question?
It does to some extent. It's still kind of unclear as to how they come to that conclusion, because the one common thing that we both have is the duty to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. But then we're creating a conflict by doing that that prohibits potentially their ability to extract the minerals that they have rights to.
Right. And so the courts have determined that the state regulation will prevail where the local regulation creates a technical or operational conflict that materially impairs, frustrates, or destroys the state interest as determined by Oil and Gas Conservation Act.
The other question that I had is, we heard a lot that people don't have to, well, not people, that there doesn't need to be proof of ownership of mineral rights. Now, is that in terms of they don't have to prove to the city that they own the mineral rights or to the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservative Commission?
Let me introduce Phil Barber. He's special counsel to the city on oil and gas matters, and he can answer your question better than I can.
Thank you, Council Phil Barber, special counsel, city of Longmont. At this point, the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission grants the right to drill or operate based upon an application that contains information. The application process at this point does not contain a requirement that there be proof of the right to develop the minerals submitted with that application.
Okay.
And... If someone believes that someone does not have the right to do that, there are actions in court for trespass and the like, but as far as I'm aware, the commission does not require proof of a lease or ownership.
And then there was talk of the LGD process. So we've heard that COGA is open to dialogue with us, and we can use the LGD process to resolve multitude of issues. If we submit an issue to them and they don't agree with us and they don't grant it, what process is there for us to appeal it?
Every application for a permit to drill an oil and gas well in any jurisdiction is, in theory, supposed to be provided to your local government designee. That's the LGD. If the LGD chooses, the LGD can ask the commission to impose conditions of approval on the permit. Don't allow them to drill, require closed-loop system, anything essentially only limited by the imagination of the LGD. The commission then can say yes or no. If the commission says, if the staff, let me back up. The staff is the first level that addresses those requests. If the staff says no, the LGD has the right to ask the commission to overturn the staff's recommendation, and vice versa. If the condition of approval is approved, the operator, the oil and gas company, has the right to ask the commission to overturn the condition of approval. So you have the staff objection made to the commission, objection made to a court, if somebody wanted to take it that far.
Thank you.
So I guess the bottom line is there is no assurance that your LGD's recommendations will be accepted.
I've got a quick question for you. Let's say hypothetically, we've got a multi-head drilling well, you know, in close proximity to school, and we have VOCs and VOXs and, you know, potential air pollution, but we also have a requirement to protect the public health, and the COGC also has the same requirement to not adversely impact public health. But if no one is monitoring, doing any air quality monitoring, then how do we prove that either side is doing what they need to be doing?
I think air quality is one of those areas where the commission looks to the Department of Environmental Quality and the Colorado Air Quality Control Commission to take the primary role. I don't think, and I may be misstating, industry will tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the commission monitors air quality very frequently. What they have done is imposed regulations such as requiring that these VOC and VOX emissions be vented in a particular way to a degree of 95% efficiency. So there is still some release into the air. The commission then, upon complaint, can look at whether the emissions are being adequately controlled under their regulations. But Longmont being in a non-attainment area, just like all of the Front Range, I think the commission looks to the Department of Environmental Quality or the Clean Air Commission for further imposition than what the commission has done. So, I mean, I think it's a very valid question, and frankly, it's not one that is, in my view, just speaking as an attorney who's looked at these regulations, not that well addressed by the COGCC.
All right. Thank you. Councilmembers, love us.
Thank you. Would you prefer that we hold questions until you're done your presentation?
Either way is fine.
Okay. I just wanted to follow up on something that councilmember Samori mentioned. If, for example, you're, as members of the public indicated, if your title search doesn't, on your home, doesn't show that you own mineral rights and there's no determination, how would you know? If you just owned a piece of farmland that you leased to somebody, and they didn't bother to tell you that somebody's driving up in a truck and putting things in. If you're an absentee landlord of a piece of raw land, how would you know to pull the trigger on trespassing? If I can't, if, you know, by a simple title search, no one's going to be able to establish whether or not the mineral rights have been severed how many generations ago? You know, is it the Wild West? Is it ranchers versus farmers again?
Well, the answer is you would do a title search. You would go to the clerk and recorder of Boulder County, or you would have your title company do that, or you would have a landman do it if you were an oil and gas company. And in those records would be from the time the United States deeded the property to John Smith in 1888 until the present time, a list of every conveyance that has been recorded. Following those conveyances, you would be able to determine, or your title company or the oil and gas company would be able to determine whether you own the minerals or not. And most people who have title policies would have something in their title policy which would say either we are ensuring that you do own the minerals, or we are not ensuring that you do own the minerals, which probably means you don't. It's not that it's the easiest thing to do, but that's why we have a recording system in Colorado, is to allow people to know what they own. So if you're a John Q farmer and somebody drives up on your property and you think they shouldn't be there, you should be able to go to your title documents and say, "Look, I own the minerals. You don't have my permission."
And the courthouse burned down in 1910 in Boulder County. And so all those records that predate 1910 may not be in existence anywhere at all.
Then they're mine.
So, I mean, that's the reality, you know? That's why every house in Old Town, when you look at your deed, it says 1910. Anything predating 1910 is unknown. So there's no way that you can tell me my house four blocks from here that the mineral rights have been severed from it or my neighbors or anybody in Old Town. So I don't know where we're going to go with some of this stuff, you know? And, you know, I don't know whether or not there's been an establishment of what happened prior to 1910. So, anyway, that was just a question, and I don't know whether or not that's a specific type of title search that, you know, we should recommend to people now, or that's going to become industry practice for people to be curious, homeowners especially in areas newly planted or newly annexed into the city. So, anyway, thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Brian.
All right. So continuing on where we left off, just a few of the other areas for potential discussion this evening are designated outside activity areas, and then some of the environmental issues regarding water quality monitoring, closed-loop systems, drilling, hydraulic fracturing fluids, and then other rules and standards. In terms of the review process, as noted in the draft regulations, it's split apart into two different processes. There's a limited-use site plan review process, which is an administrative process. If a application meets both minimum and recommended standards, and this was put in place as an attempt to provide some incentive for an operator to meet both the minimum and recommended standards whereby they would not have to go through the processes currently in place, which is a full public hearing process, it'd be an administrative process. That includes a notice of application, a staff-level review, and the only appeal is by the applicant to the planning commission in terms of any type of an appeal on a limited-use site plan. Other applications would go through a conditional use site plan, those that meet the minimum standards or only a few of the recommended standards, and that's what our current review process is. And that includes a neighborhood meeting, notice of application, public hearing, and then appeal, potentially up to city council as well. And on each of these slides, topical areas include some options for discussion either now or after the presentation, if council is inclined to discuss particular areas. So in this particular instance, we could make any changes to the presentation. So in this particular instance, we could make any changes to the draft review process that's outlined in the draft regulations. We could change it to that all review process goes through a public hearing review, or that they all be administrative review. Moving on to the next slide, in terms of zoning restrictions, under the current draft, oil and gas surface operations and facilities would not be allowed in residential zoning districts. Previous court cases have preempted a total ban of drilling in the community, but they have not banned specific zoning district restrictions. Under this scenario, if a operator wanted to obtain the mineral resources underneath a residentially zoned property, they would be required to either drill directionally or horizontally to extract those resources, or they could also apply for a special exception to that standard in terms of the prohibition on drilling in residential zoning districts. So with that, I'm going to jump ahead just a few slides to a couple of maps, and you have those at your desk as well. This is a 350-foot buffer map. And I just wanted to highlight on this particular map a couple of things. And if, Don, if you wouldn't mind turning off the big lights just for a moment, so the audience can see the maps. So this particular map shows, in green or the lighter color, shows those areas that are, which might be referred to as high-density areas, are buffered by the 350-foot setback requirement from occupied structures or building units. Also included on this map in the reddish/pinkish color is potential drilling locations in various parts of the city that are outside of that 350-foot setback. But the thing I wanted to point out on this particular map with respect to the zoning districts, the residential zoning districts where drilling would not be allowed are this horizontal hatched areas on the map, and Don's pointing out a couple of examples of those areas. And those are residential zones, areas that are zoned residentially, that would not allow surface operations that are outside of that 350-foot buffer area. So it kind of gives you some perspective. Obviously, there's a much larger area that is zoned residential in the community, but this shows those areas that are outside of that 350-foot buffer area.
I don't know if you have any questions about that.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes, Brian. Is the one area at the very top along Highway 66, is that not the area of that, you know, mixed-use PUMA that has already been looked at to be mixed-use, and wouldn't that be excluded because it's mixed-use proposed?
Well, what was included in terms of the residential classification, we included any PUD residential zoning or PUD mixed-use or mixed-use district areas that had either existing or planned residential uses would fall under that category of residential uses where surface drilling operations could not occur.
Okay, so maybe I'm not getting it. So is the black stuff off limits or still on limits?
It's off limits.
Okay. So that, so it's not the entire corridor up there, it's just only that one patch?
Well, that's the only area that's been annexed and zoned in the city. The other areas to the north of that, they're part of that Highway 66 mixed-use area, but they have not been annexed into the city yet.
Okay, so this is only things that are formally annexed into the city right now?
That's all we would have jurisdiction over in terms of our regulations.
And so Boulder County regulations would take care of those up there that are not yet annexed into the city?
Right, anything that's not into the city's jurisdiction would fall under Boulder or Weld County.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So a couple of options outlined here, either leave the draft as proposed or remove the zoning restriction. Moving on to the next slide, we have some use restrictions regarding certain types of waste disposal facilities that would be prohibited in the city. These include injection wells, subsurface disposal facilities, commercial disposal facilities, et cetera. And the rationale was that the staff felt that these types of facilities were not considered to be appropriate in urbanizing areas. And then obviously, there's a couple of options outlined here in terms of not making any changes to the draft use restrictions or removing some or all of the restrictions that are in the draft regulations. And with respect to the minimum and recommended standards, and that goes back to the administrative versus public hearing or public review process, the minimum standards that were put together were considered as a baseline standard for areas that are likely preempted by state rules or previous court rulings. And then the recommended standard reflect community concerns or desire for enhanced standards. So areas that are covered by recommended standards, most of them are likely preempted, and those include things such as financial securities assurances, setbacks to structures, building units, noise standards, setbacks to water bodies. And then another area that's not, has not been specifically ruled on as being preempted, but more than likely would be considered preempted, is drilling and hydraulic fracturing So with respect to the setbacks, we have the state's existing standard of 150 feet from a building unit and property lines, railroads, major utility lines that are above ground. There's also additional standards for high-density areas, which includes a 350-foot setback. There's additional requirements of 500 feet for, if it's within a high-density area, for things such as, for production facilities, setback from schools and other institutional facilities and designated outside activity areas. In our existing regulations, our current standard is 350 feet from occupied structures. So that, our existing regulations are beyond what the state's statewide standard is, but it is consistent with the high-density standard. In the draft regulations, the minimum standard as proposed is 350 feet plus any other applicable high-density standards. In our current regulations, under our river stream riparian corridor section of the municipal code, which is a citywide standard, we currently have 100 to 150-foot setback from water bodies for any type of development activity, which we feel that oil and gas, since other types of development activity would be subject to that standard, that oil and gas facilities would also be subject to that standard. The recommended standard is 750 feet from occupied structures, and I'll go through a couple of maps sequentially so you can kind of get a perspective on that, and then 300 feet to water bodies. So again, at your desk are four or five maps that show different buffer areas depending upon the setback. And Don, if you wouldn't mind turning off the, thank you. So this first one, which we talked about briefly just before regarding the residential zoning areas that are outside of the 350-foot buffer or setback area, the lighter color area shows the 350-foot buffer from existing structures. And so you can see that there are, internal to the city, there's a few areas where there are potential gaps in some of the golf courses, as well as some of the parks in the community. So just to compare that with respect to the next map, which is a 500-foot buffer map. So that obviously excludes out some of the areas on some of the parks within the internal areas of the city. It's still, there still are some gaps under this scenario on some of the golf course areas in the community. And then if we proceed on to the 750-foot buffer map, that continues to exclude additional areas from potential drilling within the community, and it takes out quite a few of the gaps on the parks and the golf courses as well, although there are still a few small areas shown on this map. And I just wanted to point out, in terms of one of the recommended standards, which the 750-foot buffer is, we were trying to, as we were working through this and comparing the different scenarios, we also looked at the recommendations as part of the survey questions that were posed to the joint board meeting on February 6th, and the majority of response from the joint boards was somewhere between 500 feet and 1,000 feet in terms of a recommended standard for setback requirements. So that's one of the rationale for coming up with this particular recommended standard. We certainly appreciate your input on this as well. And then finally, one other scenario we ran is the 1,000-foot buffer map, and as you can see, that excludes a substantial large area in terms of potential drilling areas around Union Reservoir and most of the golf courses areas and the parks within the internal community as well. So I'll just stop for, well, let me run on to the next slide just quickly. So in terms of setback options, thanks, Don. One option would be not to make any changes to the draft setback standards. Another option would be to revise either the minimum standards, either higher or lower, than what we currently have in the draft, revise the recommended standards, either higher or lower, or revise it completely just to utilize the current state standards. Next item we wanted to touch upon is the outside activity areas. So this is a process that's currently under the COGCC rules, that they, the commission has the ability upon application to designate areas that are public gathering areas, such as playgrounds and parks, that meet the use criteria. And the, just for reference, the standard is 20 or more persons on at least 40 days in any 12-month period, or 500 or more persons on at least three days in any 12-month period potentially could qualify as a designated outside activity area. So currently, an application is made to the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, and they make a determination in terms of whether or not they agree with the data that's presented in terms of the potential designated outside activity area. And the commission would also establish a boundary as well as setbacks associated with a designated outside activity area. If the commission designates an area, then no drilling could occur within the boundary of that outside activity area, and then there's established setbacks, and the minimum is typically 350 feet, although there are instances where it could be greater than the 350-foot setback as well. Sandstone Ranch was approved as a designated outside activity area in the early, I think it was around 2001, 2002, and I believe it may be the only one currently designated in the state as such. So, did you have a question?
I did have a question. Are other golf courses in other municipalities designated as outdoor activity areas?
Councilmember Finley, I do not believe that currently that any other areas other than Sandstone Ranch, the ball fields at Sandstone Ranch have been designated as outside activity areas. That's my understanding, and Mr. Barber, if you have any other information?
As far as I know, Sandstone Ranch is the only designated outside activity area in the state of Colorado. Whether other applications have been made for that designation, I can't speak to that. I know of one other instance where the commission turned it down. It's discretionary with the commission to grant that designation or not.
So with this, with respect to this particular provision, our attempt was to try to be as creative as we could with respect to incorporating a potential process whereby utilizing the same criteria as the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission utilizes for designating outside activity areas, we would have our Plan and Zoning Commission review that, those criteria, and make a determination of whether or not they feel that the proposed areas would meet the same criteria as used by the state in making their determination in terms of the number of persons over a certain number of days over a 12-month period. After further reflection, we feel that we may need to, instead of going through the Plan and Zoning Commission, using them as a review and decision-making body, go through the process, make application with the state, and have that reviewed by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission as part of that process. So there's a map in your packet as well, and this just shows some potential areas. And just for reference on the map, we've got, on here, we've got buffer areas from areas such as Union Reservoir and MacIntosh Lake. We've got public trail systems that potentially could meet the standard as an outside activity area, golf courses, public parks, and school playground areas are potential areas that we would want to discuss with the COGCC staff and reach some agreement with respect to the methodology that we're using and the data that we have regarding the public use of those facilities to see if we are in concurrence regarding whether or not those areas potentially could be designated as outside activity areas. And that's one area that we'd like to continue to pursue with the state staff regarding this particular area. So, again, options, I never touched upon this. You know, one option is to not change the draft. The more likely option would be to remove the Plan and Zoning Commission, review of outside activity areas, and pursue designation with the COGCC staff and the commission, provided those areas meet the state criteria. With respect to water quality monitoring, this is one of those areas where it's uncertain whether there is a preemption, and we included this as a minimum standard whereby an operator would be required to meet the state standards, and if the city felt that there was a need for additional monitoring, that we could require the operator to provide a water quality monitoring plan that we felt was appropriate for a particular area, and that, under the current draft, the monitoring plan would be funded by the operator. So some of the options outlined here are not make any changes to the draft, revise how the monitoring would be funded, or revise to just the state standards only. Closed-loop pitless systems, this is another standard that we included as a minimum requirement, where closed-loop systems would be required and open pit would not be allowed. As was mentioned by Mr. Madder at the Plan and Zoning Commission, he felt, and it's been reiterated in several of the letters that the state and the Attorney General's offices sent to other jurisdictions, that the state believes that the closed-loop's requirements are preempted since the state issues pit permits. But we felt comfortable... But we felt comfortable including the closed-loop system as a requirement in the draft regulations. There's some data regarding the use of closed-loop systems whereby, within the past year, you know, the vast majority, or 70, 80, 70 to 80% of operations are currently using closed-loop systems. We heard from top operating at the Plan and Zoning Commission last week indicated that they have no intent to use closed-loop systems as part of their operations. Oh, sorry, open pit systems as part of their operations. And that, we just feel that the use of, yeah. That last week at the Plan and Zoning Commission, top operating as part of their comments during the public hearing indicated that they have no intent to use open pits, and they utilize, they're currently utilizing closed-loop systems as part of their operations. Sorry for that. And then staff just feels that open pits aren't an appropriate use in an urban area near water bodies or other sensitive areas because of the potential impacts associated with them. So with respect to options, we've got no change to the draft, or another option would be to remove the closed-loop system requirement. And then with respect to drilling and hydraulic fracturing fluids, we've got minimum and recommended standards. The minimum standard is that the operator need to comply with the state rules regarding use and disclosure of fluids, and that the green fluids and use of tracers would be a recommendation. The recommended standard is that green fluids and use of tracers would be required, and that the city could have the samples analyzed at the operator's cost. Again, there's a couple of options here, one to not make any change, or the other option would be to remove the recommended standard. As I mentioned previously, the, this particular provision regarding the, or issue regarding drilling and hydraulic fracturing fluids may be a topic that's tending more towards a preempted area than a gray area. Yes?
Councilmember Witt?
Thank you. Brian, I heard from a resident who works in the industry that says, currently, there are no fluids, green fluids, that could be used. Is that, that's an email that I received. There are no green fracking fluids at this time.
Councilmember Witt? And that's kind of what we've been hearing as well. I know that our legal counsel had some discussions with Colorado Oil and Gas Association members, where they got some of that feedback as well, that that, meeting this recommended standard would be difficult, if not impossible, given the current technology. So that's one of the areas where we're thinking that we may need to potentially modify the draft regulations.
And also, we can't require them to have a unicorn either, because that does not exist at this time.
So just to wrap this up, I apologize for the length. But any other areas that council may want staff to discuss, or have any other topics of interest or other issues raised by the public, we'd be happy to respond to that.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I feel like we're watching an episode of Man vs. Food. Can we digest this? I guess I've got some concerns in general, and that is, first of all, hats off to the staff. I know you guys have had late nights. I know you guys have been stressing about this. I actually took some time, read the draft regs. Fortunately, I took a couple hours, had enough time to read the lawyer, or the letter that came today from Andrew Casper, the Regulatory Council for the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. So I've read it. I've seen your work. You're doing a great job. My concern is that the regs, my concern is that you felt pressured to ask us for our opinion when the regs were drafted a week ago, but you already probably have made a week's progress in your thinking? And so in talking with the city attorney, Mr. May, and hearing his comments, and then digesting my own thoughts, as I'm watching this presentation today, I'm thinking, is the information that we were just presented current? In other words, if we told you, go back, if we're going to be preempted, take it out, and if there's a yellow area that hasn't been ruled on, but it makes sense, meaning it's fair to the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission and the operators, and it's also fair to the city and its residents, go ahead and go for it. And if it's something that we absolutely have a green light on, go ahead and include it. I mean, would you be better able today to explain what those three areas are compared to when this presentation was created and when the regulations were written?
Well, I'm not sure. We're hoping to get some direction, have a discussion with council with respect to areas you would like us to perhaps look at, or you may have some concerns with the draft regulations. There's some other tools or options that I know that Eugene wants to discuss with the council as well. I know that we've been, obviously, the drilling and hydraulic fracturing fluids is one area that we've had some discussions since, you know, just recently, since the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, and recent discussions with the Colorado Oil and Gas Association and the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission as well. Some other areas that we may want to take a look at, and we look at, is the notion regarding setbacks. There's some other areas that we feel that we could probably tweak as well in the draft regulations, in terms of some of the wording, whereby some areas such as an operational plan talks about drilling types of, types of drilling operations, and that may be an area where we may be preempted in terms of requesting that type of information. So with that, perhaps might be best if maybe we turn this over to Mr. May just for a few minutes, and he can touch upon a few of the areas that we've also been discussing outside of the realm of the drafting of the regulations, and some of the other tools and avenues that we may want to explore and discuss with the city council.
Thank you, Brian, mayor, and council Eugene May, city attorney again. To address your question, councilmember Bagley, you know, that was the purpose of the draft regulations, was to get public input, and certainly we value council's input as part of that process. With respect to the Colorado Oil and Gas Association letter, I don't think there was much in there. That came as a surprise. We were certainly expecting comments along those lines. So, you know, we are also expecting a letter from the COGCC/Attorney General's Office. We imagine it's going to look very similar to the letters that that office sent to El Paso County, Douglas County, Arapaho County. And, you know, that's part of the public process, is to get input from all the various stakeholders. And to review that information, get that information, if they raise legitimate points, we would consider modifications similar to what Brian said about certain areas like the green fracking fluids, operational plants, middle requirements, things like that.
Okay, thank you. I guess I might as well just throw out some, some things that you probably are aware of. I mean, like, for example, page two, under "Application Subject to Public Hearing Review", "Planning and Zoning Commission Determination of Designated Outside Activity Area." I know that you and I have talked about this, Mr. May, about the idea of, instead of saying "Planning and Zoning Commission Determination," simply replace it with something such as "Planning and Zoning Commission Suggestions Regarding Potentially and/or Likely Designated Outside Activity Areas," just kind of putting the operators on notice, that if you want to drill here, this might be a problem. I also, I don't think it's economically or financially viable to require them to use green, green fluids at this time. I kind of view that as, again, what I told you when we met, it's kind of, it's going to happen in the future, and we want to be ready for when it happens. But in the meantime, if it's just going to slap us down, I don't think we should do it. I mean, I feel a little bit like I have a lot of clients come into my office, and they're upset, and they don't like the law, but it doesn't change the law. So why draft regs that we know we're going to go into court and get slammed over when there are areas that we can focus on and protect our city? Other areas, for example, like, I mean, the maps, really what made me go for, go for, my original question was, in looking at the maps, I mean, setbacks are preempted. And so my concern is, if we, I mean, we have to be clear that it's a recommended setback, or else it won't be permitted, it will be preempted. So I guess my thoughts are, I really like the map at the back. I like this. Not, I mean, I wish it was more green. I do. But I thought it was a very good idea to use the, you know, the 350-foot outside activity area idea to incorporate as much area as possible. I also think that, I mean, there are things in there when I read the regs, I mean, for example, we'll be preempted if we require them, for example, to test their water. But it's okay if we do it. So my, I guess my question was really, do you need more time? I mean, having been through plenty of processes legally, I know how difficult it can be to go from strategy or idea to execution and implementation. And when I read it, you know, if I had a nickel for every time that I had a deadline, my office puts together the legal document, and then two days later I get a call from a client, and they're like, oh, well, there's this paragraph on page 26, and it says this. Is this really what you wanted it to say? Oh, no, 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 sorry. Well, we'll get it to you. So I'm just concerned that what I read is actually right now what you would suggest. And I'm a big believer in listening to our attorney, as I've said before. So my question is, as our attorney, and I've already just tossed out a few ideas of where I think that if you had a little bit more time, or you had your druthers, you would have already addressed these things, because I've heard you say them this week, and I thought they were excellent ideas, but they're just not in the draft regs yet. So what do we need to do?
So councilmember Bagley, you know, the draft regulations were the best work that the staff could accomplish within the timeframe given.
Right, and I'm not ripping on you. You've done phenomenal jobs.
And I think we did a great job. You know, I could address some of the specific concerns you raised and the progress we've made in the week. And for us, right now, a week is a lot of time, and things move very quickly under the current schedule. But our draft regs were released on February 10th. Since that time, we've met with the COGCC, we've met with COGA, we've held the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've got public feedback, we've gotten comment letters from the COGA and ROR. We are digesting that information. And so, you know, one of the items of discussion were other approaches that staff came up with, non-direct regulatory approaches, which are other avenues of opportunity, which we learned about, some through our meeting with the COGCC, others through staff discussions. These are up on the screen right now. And so there are a number of different areas which we could pursue, including memorandum of understanding. Certainly, Gunnison County has entered into a local inspection MOU with the COGCC. We understand El Paso is negotiating perhaps an MOU on groundwater monitoring. That's another sort of collaborative approach with the COGCC to address local concerns. We also would like to take top operating up on their invitation to meet with them, with the potential of developing a set of operational standards agreed upon by the two parties, the city and top, and looking at incorporating those into a permitting process through the COGCC. We've also looked at convening an operators meeting of current or likely future operators in the area. These would include entities such as Noble and Cana Top and Anadarko, with a possible outcome from that being a comprehensive drilling plan or a local area plan. We've also been in touch with the COGCC regarding our outside activity area designation, and working with their staff to have a pre-review of our data and methodology, and to have a, maybe a preliminary approval of how that data was pulled together. And also, there is a public process being initiated by the COGCC this week, looking at the setback issue and others that could result in a rulemaking process, and so we're going to be involved in that. So there are a lot of other alternatives to direct local regulation that we're looking at in addition to the regulations. And I hear you, you know, certainly our timeframe is very aggressive, and certainly something I would want to put on the table for council to consider would be a 60-day extension of the moratorium to allow us to pursue these other non-direct regulation approaches while continuing to work on and refine our draft regulations to a point where they're ready in final form for council consideration. And I think these two processes do go together. These alternatives to direct local regulation and the regulations look to address local concerns, and that's really the policy outcome goal of this whole exercise. And we want to create an environment where there is an invitation out to industry and the state to work with us cooperatively to address our concerns through whatever means or channel or process makes the most sense. And so, you know, I think a 60-day extension would allow staff to produce a better work product and a better outcome for the community.
Thank you, Mr. May. I have several more questions and comments, but I'm going to let my fellow councilmen have their turn.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Eugene, for that explanation. I have a couple of questions. You know, I don't see, well, I don't see why we couldn't do everything concurrently if council decides to do a 60-day extension of the moratorium, meeting with the stakeholders and what have you, but also continue on going with the regulations that we have before us. And I'm trying to find the page I highlighted, so, I'll say it's on page 14. There it is. I'm sorry, page 15, line 31, to production site containment. Brian, at, Board of, excuse me, Board of Environmental Affairs brought up that the secondary containment for 150% of the largest single tank, which is line 35, was, and there were several people there that worked, have worked in the industry, said that's above and beyond what the federal and state regs say. So, I mean, that's something we might want to check into. As far as the regulations themselves, and I was just, I just wanted to point that out regarding the Birmingham, good job. I know it was, it's been very rough and very cumbersome, there's a lot of information, and whether or not these are the, these are the ones that we're going to pass or not pass, what have you, I still would like to go through, and Eugene, go through what is, what your recommendations are for these rules and regulations, one by one. But also, you know, if we're going, if council decides to do a 60-day extension, fix those issues while, again, while talking with the COGCC, COGA, taking up whoever would like to permit, and discuss whether it's a MOU, whether it's some sort of other agreement, what have you. If we can do those concurrently, I guess I would be almost inclined to do an extension. But, you know, are you telling me it could be done in 60 days?
Mayor and council, certainly it's our intention to pursue these alternatives to direct regulation regardless of whether there's an extension or not. I think it would be a better outcome if there were an extension, to provide an opportunity for the city and the various stakeholders to work cooperatively together in that time period. period. And I guess that answers.
Sure. And I'm hesitant to go another 30 to 60 days. Because I'm, again, I know you guys have been working very hard and now we have COGA, COGCC wanting to come to the table. I'm almost wondering why didn't they come to the table before? And I would like to keep, keep my foot on the gas, so to speak, to keep these regulations going, but if we're, if we're going to negotiate and negotiate in good faith, I want to be able to, you know, these meetings need to start, they need to start tomorrow. The only thing, again, my only other recommendation is that we go through these, you go through the list and let's see where council is on each one of these recommendations, whether we take it out, leave it in, take it out. I'm sorry? No, I'm, there's still more discussion, there's other people lined up to speak. But I'd like to, let's have that discussion.
And if I could just address one issue, given the timeframe that we laid out in the 120-day moratorium, you know, there were sort of two processes that we could have done. We could have done stakeholder input at the beginning or alternatively have staff draft the regulation, do stakeholder input afterwards. We chose the latter because of the timeframe and so in, not in defense, but as an explanation, COGA and COGCC were invited by the city to be at the table for the drafting of the regulations. We thought it would be more efficient to have staff come back with the draft regulations, put them out for public input and review and take the comments and invite them to the table at that time.
I guess I'm going to weigh in here. Again, I thought it was a very good job that you all did and I like generally the regulations. I think a couple of things that I'm still a little bit concerned about, and one is on the issuance of oil and gas well permits, you know, starting on page five, you list four things in a row of what's required, but I think a fifth thing is proof of ownership of the mineral rights should be added as an upgrade to, because that's just basically a title search, it doesn't sound like that should be that hard for an operator to actually come to the table proving that they truly do own the mineral rights. The other thing that I'm concerned about that may be a preemptive is dear quality. You know, we have a requirement to protect our citizens' health and yet no one's really addressing that, you know, unless we go to the Environmental Protection Agency, as Phil suggested. So I'm a little concerned about that and maybe a little bit more work and, you know, figure out what we can do. If there's anything we can do, I'd like to do it. I do like the idea that we try to be as aggressive as we can in all those yellow areas, you know, without creating a ton of lawsuits against us and then be as aggressive as we can in the green areas. That's my recommendations for just the overview of these regs at this point. Councilmember Finlay.
Thank you, Mayor. My recommendation is we do both at the same time, that we, we fine tune this draft to be what we want it to be and also do, pursue the outside activity areas with the COGCC. I think that's important. I do want to see us do the closed-loop system, but I did have a question about prohibiting injection wells of wastewater. Is that preempted or is it not?
You know, that would be a yellow light area. We're looking at it. Certainly, the industry's position is that it is preempted. That's about as far as I want to say.
All right. Also, I find it interesting that the only two wells that have gone through the process are on Sandstone Ranch property and yet that's our only designated outside activity area. One must have happened before the other one.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
The application for the designated outside activity area was filed when a permit, a stake showed up at second base of the ballpark. And at that time, the ballpark, the ballpark was already built. And while we asked for the designated outside activity area for the entire park, the commission ruled that because the park was not complete for certain, especially the southern part of the park, it didn't qualify. Whereas the ball field and the parking lots did because they were built out.
All right. Thank you for that. I think it's great that we would pursue operational standards agreement with the, with the operators. I wish we'd done that earlier and I hope we do that as soon as possible and come up with a comprehensive drilling plan. I think that would be great. The MOU with TOP, I think, is essential. And I too think we ought to go through each of these things individually so that we can give you our input on them.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So what I've heard is that the various communities that have received letters and have backed out from adopting regulations are currently negotiating individually with COGCC or COGA. Why isn't there a concerted effort by all the communities to negotiate at one time? Because I would imagine that we're all, as communities, seeking the same thing. And wouldn't it be more powerful to go in as a group and negotiate as one body versus getting a piece here and a piece there?
Mayor and Councilmember Samori, you know, back in January when there was the meeting of county and city attorneys for the Wattenberg Field, I floated the idea of trying to take a more regional approach. There wasn't a lot of enthusiasm for it at that time. And, you know, I think that the networks are not as close for counties and cities working separately and certainly the strategy, it appears, for the state and COGA is to divide and conquer, to take each municipality one by one and to weigh in in their public processes and make it, make their views known on preemption and make it difficult for the elected officials to approve regulations that challenge that position.
So can we float that idea again and see if we can get a better response?
I have tried, we certainly can. I think I would work through CML and try to get support for an idea like that and, you know, certainly there are a number of front-range communities dealing with this issue.
Okay. And I guess I would be in favor of pushing the envelope in terms of regulations and going, even, even though where the yellow areas may potentially be preempted, I would push to go there. Because in the contract or in the regulations themselves, we could always put wording that if any one of those regulations was deemed unenforceable, we can just take it out without negating the whole regulation. And likewise, it might be a good idea to put in some terminology that would adopt into the regulations any stricter contingencies that are generated by other communities or COGCC or COGA. And this way, we have our basis covered and we don't have to go through this process continuously.
Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. All right, several thoughts. I would like to look at that issue of grandfathering that Mr. Jeffries brought up. All right. It would seem to me that it would be in the best interests of not only the industry and the state and Longmont if we could have some set of uniform regulations that apply to suburban areas as opposed to the wide-open spaces of the western and eastern plains. The, and of course, other smarter people than me have brought this up, I am sure. In most of these cases that have challenged the COGCC, they seem to be counties and not cities, I believe really challenged earlier on. Now, I would like to use the process that has been established, but I kind of had, became deflated after talking to somebody from the, from COGA. And I was really excited because when I was talking to this person, they said, hey, you know what? Use your local, what we can do is we can partner together and you, we can actually try to establish the things that you're trying to get for Longmont and we'll make it industry standard, and I'm sure that they tell that to everybody. And so I just, I'm like, that is a great idea, we would love to do that, we would love to be the ones to partner with you. And so every one that I brought up, oh no, we couldn't do that, oh no, we couldn't do that. So I was like, he got me all excited and then it really let me down. I'm pretty sad about that. So although I would really like to work through the process and make the regulations better, I, I'm kind of hesitant or leery of the willingness of COGCC to really partner with municipalities. It sounds like they are really trying to partner with, with counties, but municipalities are different than, than the counties. I have a question as to creating operational standards agreements. What is the, why would a company want to enter into an operational standards agreement with us when they could, by right, do whatever they wanted per the state regulations? Why would they enter into an operational standards agreement with us? Can anybody answer that for me?
Mayor and council, I think there's a number of benefits to the operator to enter into operational standards agreement. One, there's certainty. There's certainty as to the standards that would apply to every well application in the city of Longmont. I think there would be opportunities perhaps for a streamlined city review process if all these applications are going to be uniform, they know that we won't be objecting. And we are looking for a win-win outcome to address local concerns. And, you know, I don't think industry is trying to do evil. They're trying to look to complete their business in an efficient manner that would make good neighbors with the city and good neighbors with the community, and this is an opportunity for them to do so.
And, thank you, Mr. May. This setback review stakeholders process, can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Well, we know that there's a meeting this Thursday.
Okay.
It's down in Denver, it's one to three.
Okay.
I can get you the, I'm planning to attend that. I know that there's other interested parties that are planning to attend from the community as well. And that's about all we know today.
So far, okay.
We have a lot of information on it.
Mayor, the other thing we do know is they said that it was going to be in a room that would seat at least 125 people and we immediately thought, wow, that's not expecting a very big crowd for an issue like this, so I hope they have a bigger, bigger place.
And then, one other thing, what, and this is probably a question to pose to council to think about, what would we, what assurances or what would we have to have in place, what agreements would we have to have in place with COGCC in order to, for us to not go ahead with our own regulations? What, and so we need to be thinking about that because that is, these are, this is our requirement, these are, this is what we're going to ask for. And if we do not get this, we will absolutely enact these regulations and we absolutely will take, take court cases if this is not, if our standards are not met. So, just a thought.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. Because I read the regulations, I have something that I don't understand as a sentence, so if you don't mind. You know, I read it like five times and I'll read it out loud and I don't know if I just was reading, like, totally not reading it right. So it's on page six, under enforcement and penalties, on item number one, that's on line 36, it says, one and two, line 36 and 37. One, "Oil and gas operators that have not obtained a city oil and gas well permit in compliance with these regulations or do not comply with oil and gas well permit requirements." What? You know, and so there's like a missing clause there, like maybe four more sentences?
It's actually a heading for that section, it's not a specific standard.
Okay, all righty. So I guess there's not a separation and so it just looked like there needed to be something else, like if, I guess, the small thing is, you know, could you do double bold on the, or make the section enforcement and penalties, you know, a bigger size for old eyes and then have, you know, maybe the titles of these things folded, you know, the section titles, that would be helpful because otherwise I couldn't read that as a sentence, I didn't understand it.
I understand that, we have that in our current code where certain section headings aren't really complete sentences necessarily.
Okay.
But I know in terms of the draft regulations, the, kind of the nomenclature in terms of section numbers isn't currently in here, so that's something we'd add depending upon what direction we get, in terms of sections we want to include or not include.
So these are not totally ready for prime time, is what you're saying?
Well, in terms of references to section numbers and stuff like that, yeah, we need to add all that information in as we draft and ordinance. This is just kind of the regulations and kind of the initial cut, so.
And I guess there were a couple of other things that I wanted to look at. On page 17, when we talk about transportation impacts and road and access, on line 28, it says, "Such drawings shall be in substantial conformance with city standards." I've actually been in public meetings where instead of a plat map, somebody turned up at a public meeting with a improvement location survey, which gave, I mean, basically it meant substantial, basically it was a piece of paper with some drawing on it. And that meant what was the substantial requirement, that you bring a piece of paper with some drawing on it. So I would suggest with, because you don't have substantial defined in your definitions in the back, that would be up to question about what would you consider meeting substantially with the standard. And so I would suggest we remove the word substantial throughout the document if there is a question about, you know, we have no definition of substantial in the back. So I don't understand, maybe that's defined somewhere else in our code, but if it's not defined in this section of code, it would seem a bit unfair for somebody to have to go comb through the rest of the city code to figure out what the definition, make, meet a substantial standard would be. And I guess I would like to also weigh in to push on some of these items where there is some wiggle room. I think that you have, in the public policy area, you have your most substantial conversations back and forth with regulatory agencies when you have regulations that might meet the needs of different, different types of situations. And I'm referring back to what Councilmember Witt said regarding a suburban standard as opposed to, you know, a wide-open, no fence in the West standard. Certainly, land use regulations change radically when you're talking about where people have homes and businesses and where other uses in suburban areas and cities are, the expectation of established areas is that there's a degree of protection that people, the illusion of protection, perhaps, that people buy into, when they buy into a neighborhood that's been platted 10, 20 years ago or it's been annexed into the city. neighborhood that's been platted 10, 20 years ago or it's been annexed into the city for over 100. And so it's just like we have code that people have a reasonable expectation when there's a certificate of occupancy issued on a new property that it substantially, not substantially, it actually meets code requirements for being occupied. People have confidence in government due to these things and due to regulations where they don't have to say, I'm going to have to hire an attorney to go and examine my title search to make sure that I'm not going to have an oil and gas well parked in my backyard if they happen to have a, a farmet that's still within the city limits. So again, it's not an, I don't think the public who, who's come to us nor citizens have an unrealistic expectation of a protection of government to fulfill what our charges in our charter to protect the, the health and safety of our residents when they, they bought property here. So I'm going to, um, uh, come down on the side of the property rights of the individuals in this community who have made substantial investments here, not just residences, but businesses as well, and who have also complied with everything. And as far as, I would also support doing some parallel work here. However, it, these draft regulations took a lot of intense time and my expectation would be that while staff is working on discussion, stakeholder discussions, helping to draft new policy at the state level, participating in rulemaking and MOUs and looking at operational agreements with, um, industry companies that, that want to, um, have permits in, you know, within our city, um, that, that, that we kind of work on the draft regulations kind of at a lower level. Because for example, if we get everything going at the regulatory level at the state, these may become less important, as other councilmembers said. But they should be in readiness, is my opinion. And my direction would be to go and pursue those fruitful conversations that we are likely to have with the, the process that you outlined, Mr. May, with the other tools and options available. The other question I have for, have for council is, um, the Policy Committee for CML is coming up on Thursday and I just want to know whether or not I can represent what our discussion here is tonight, that we are looking at our draft regulations with some of those red, those yellow light issues with some strong support to kind of see where the envelope is being pushed to be opened or shut. So I'm just looking for some nods of heads and I'm seeing some. Okay. All right. So if you don't mind, I'll just make sure I have my notes with me. And I'll look forward tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, I believe, or morning it is, we will have an opportunity to sit in on the presentation from Tisha Shure from, uh, COGA and, or COGCC, um, and, uh, at the CML legislative workshop. So I'll also take some notes and see if there's the latest information being presented there. And as far as a couple of other items, um, I am interested in making sure that people actually have the rights to exercise, you know, pulling oil and gas, um, you know, permits. And if the state hasn't made any requirement that you actually prove that you either own the rights or you bought the lease rights, um, again, I think it's an unreasonable burden for a property owner to have to go ahead and defend their rights for somebody to trespass. I mean, if somebody comes on your property now, even if you don't have a fence in your yard, you call the police and say someone is trespassing. And so in that regard, the city would be the police. They're not going to call COGCC to say, you're going to be the police when COGCC has nothing to do with them. They've not, they've been silent on that issue. And I, I guess the other part of the message here is, um, and what I'm hearing, um, I think from my fellow, fellow councilmembers is that you can have the best regulations in the world, but if you have no enforcement whatsoever, no one has confidence that anything will be followed up or done. And, you know, you triple the inspections and again, you know, it would be like you dialing 911 and nobody shows up. I want somebody to show up and, and defend the property rights that are inherent with everybody in this city. And it's also the property rights, not just of your individual residents, the property rights that we have invested in through our tax dollars with open space in our parks.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Going back to what councilmember Witt stated earlier in terms of just pursuing an MOU and not necessarily having our own regulations, if I understood that correctly, I would not be in favor of that. I think we should have our own strong regulations and negotiate MOUs as well because if I'm hearing things right, we're going to be negotiating with several entities, not one entity for MOUs. Did I, is that correct?
Mayor and council, that is correct. It may not necessarily be an MOU, but we would be negotiating with the COGCC on certain issues and we'd be negotiating with operators directly on other issues.
Councilmember Bagley.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I've heard, uh, uh, something that Mayor Potem Santos said struck me earlier and then it's been echoed several times. I guess in preparation for making a motion, what I would like to see is I would like to see, first of all, I would like to ask the mayor, or, uh, our city council or our city attorney, Mr. May, how much time can you get it done in 30 days? And when I say get it done, what I would like to see is, I would like you to go back. I would like you to tighten up the regs and I would like you at the end of that 30-day period to give a presentation just only on that topic. You, will you basically walk us through the, yeah, the red, yellow and green areas and give us your suggestion? As our attorney, let us know what is and is not allowed and then let us understand what the issues are and then we'll discuss it briefly and we'll give you direction. That's what I'd like to see. So I move that we give him a 30-day timeout, call it extending the moratorium, call it pushing back our deadlines or whatever, specifically for the purpose for him to finish the regulations, tighten them up and then come back and specifically give a presentation, whether it be in public or an executive session, so we have the opportunity to address each of these things, understand the specific legal consequences and be able to just move forward.
Okay. Um, I guess my thoughts on that is I'm not against 30 days, but I'm more for 60 days because Eugene came out and basically asked us for 60 days planning and zoning, asked us to extend the moratorium, they didn't say a time limit. But anyway, that's my thoughts on it. So councilmember Witt.
I, let me be clear. I will not extend this again. I will, it's a one-shot deal. I would rather go 60 days and get it done than have 30 days and then come back and say, oh, actually, we didn't get this run by Board of Environmental Affairs, we need more time. I don't want to play that game. I would rather just say 60 days and do it.
Councilmember Levison.
You know, I would trust staff and, um, and see what they can get done. I think we might want to leave it open to say, when they can get this done, they come back. We could say 60 days and if there is, uh, the situation where it's on the precipice of getting some of this other stuff done and yet we've drawn a line in the sand and said, no more than 60 days, gee, we're so sorry, you know, and COGCC is just about ready to get all that rulemaking and the stakeholders need two or three more meetings, but sorry, we're going to be rigid and say that. You know, I would like to say, maybe what we do is the realistic thing is to say 90 days and then say, fine, 90 days gives us that process. Well, I, you know, I don't know how quickly COGCC works. You know, they're, they're working hard, everybody's working hard, but if it's not physically possible, we have no control over the schedule of the other regulatory authorities that want to weigh in. And there could be several iterations of this conversation going on. Other cities might and counties might be more empowered to jump into the process. So, you know, I would, I would suggest even 90 days is not unrealistic. We can always change it to make it shorter. We can always end it sooner if the work gets done sooner.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think what we're talking about, the extension is for our own regulations, not necessarily negotiating the MOU because we understand that could take a longer period of time to negotiate that. But the extension was specifically to get our own regulations in place if I'm understanding it correctly. So I would suggest a friendly amendment and based on what Commerce City did where you have a rolling 30 days. I think that would be a reasonable compromise.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Nothing's easy with you people, you know that? The, uh, and I mean that for you two bastards. Um, uh, the, uh, I guess the question I have is, Mr. May, how much time do you need?
Mayor and council, I wasn't clear about the motion. I thought I heard that the city attorney was to come back in 30 days to give a legal evaluation of each of these subject areas. To me, that was separate from the issue of moratorium extension.
Correct. Meaning that I would like you to clarify the motion. I want him to go back, I've had conversations with him, as I'm sure he's had with you, put what he's told us into the regs or into this draft and then so it's more of a final, solid, substantive document and then come back and walk us through the pieces. And what I mean by 30 days is simply push it back 30 days to give him enough time to do that. Because it's a 23-page legal document and I imagine it's going to take some time to read and think and set aside and talk and discuss. That's what I meant. No, I mean, and it would also, and it would also extend the moratorium by 30 days because that, that, that was the original, that was the original implication of, of my motion. But what I heard from you folks is a rolling day 30, 60 days, 90 days, silence, couple of chuckles, six months.
Originally, he said 60 days is what they would have a really good work product.
Right.
Why wouldn't we want to trust what staff and our attorney?
And that's what I was asking. That's what I was asking. Because I was, all right. Okay, my, my counsel under, under duress, no, just kidding. The, uh, I would like to amend, although there's a friendly amendment on the table. Was there a second? Okay. Then I would like to amend my original motion from 30 to 60 days. It sounds like we have the votes.
Yeah. Okay. So Bonnie seconds it, so. All right, let's vote.
Actually, can I ask for clarification?
Okay.
So the, the 60 days that you're asking for the amendment to, is that would be to extend the moratorium for 60 additional days from April 17th plus 60 days? Or is that 60 days for him to get a final draft to us?
It's 60 days.
That's a good question because, uh...
Well, April 17th is the original end date, so wouldn't we just add 60 days to that?
Right. Well, here's, what, what all I...
We could still do the 30 days.
Yeah, the purpose of the motion, I just want him to take what he told me in my office and have time to put it into this document. And I don't see what he told me in the off, in my office. So I want to give him 30 days, whatever time he needs to make the changes to the document so I, as one-seventh of his client, can actually read what he told me so I can go, ah, there it is. Because I'm not seeing it right now. So what I would be concerned about is that at the end of 60 days, he makes the presentation and then we're still not done. I just want to be done.
Mayor, I would just like to, uh, say that the motion, if it were to extend the moratorium for 60 days, is part of what staff is needing to understand and know and that means we need to come back with an ordinance and have it approved so that we know the period of time. So that's one thing. But the other part of councilmember Bagley's statement that confuses me a bit and I think that maybe we need clarity is that, uh, as he indicated, the conversations he's had with the city attorney is one-seventh of the body that's trying to give us direction as to what we actually really need to come back with. And I think it would be nice to have some direction from the council as a whole as to where you want us to be working and changing things because if we address one-seventh of the council now, come back with new rules and the other six that you say, well, that's not what I understood we really wanted, then we really are going to be on a long process.
Councilmember Levison.
So can I make a suggestion to see if this would please councilmember Bagley immensely is that maybe what, I'm, I'm sort of hearing what you're interested in is to have black and white and green, red and yellow with this word draft written across it. Is that what you're looking for?
Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. What I'm looking for, in a nutshell, yes. What I'm looking for specifically, and I would like support from my councilmembers, is to have our attorney, what I do every day, my client comes in and says, what do you think? And then I tell him and then they say, that advice is terrible, or they say, go for it. What I'm looking for is our attorney to have time to revise this document and give us his best legal opinion regarding red, yellow and green, present it to us and then we can have a discussion, item by item, in order to determine, don't do it, do it, or we know it's futile, but what do you think? Just make your best guess. So I just want our attorney to be able to have the opportunity to hand us a finished document to the extent it's possible and then we can have that discussion. Because right now, we've got people who are constituents of the community, who are rightfully emotional, you've got people on council who are rightfully confused and you've got COGA and COGCC and our attorney and Mr. Barber, who all have their own opinions. But we have a great attorney, I'd just like to hear what he thinks and then we can respond. That's what I want ultimately. So yes, I guess is my answer to you.
Okay, so basically your thing's a two-part thing, that he comes back with a better final copy of this within 30 days, 30 days or less, whenever it's done, and we also extend the moratorium by 30 days, or by 60 days.
Sure. I want, I just want to hear what our attorney thinks, but I think that there's two motions on the table then.
Well, is it, is it a combined motion, a two-part motion?
I don't think you can, but...
Sure, sure.
Anyway, so the motion, yeah, so let's try this again. I will amend my motion. I move that we give 30 days to our city attorney, Mr. May, to finalize this document to the extent that it's possible and that he brings us his recommendations regarding red, yellow and green areas of municipal regulation. And then we, uh, we'll have the opportunity to have him present on it so that we can then have discussion and give him feedback and at the same time that we extend the moratorium by 60, 60 days. Two months.
Okay, is that legal, Eugene? Can we make a combined motion like that?
You can make a compound motion, of course. Council could ask to divide the question if, if they want to vote on them separately.
All right, I'll, I'll second the combined motion as stated.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, and I would like to be the first to start the discussion then. What, um, what I'd like to do is, um, separate the various ideas that you're running here, okay? And the reason I, I, I want to do that is that, um, you know, first of all, the situation with him coming back in 30 days with multi-colors, you know, Joseph and the multicolor, you know, dream coat of regulations... know, dream coat of regulations, is great. However, I also think we have an opportunity to simultaneously, let me throw one other thing on it, have those boards and commissions that didn't have any draft regulations to take a crack at them and give us an opinion, too. Planning and zoning was able to do that, um, and yet I think that, um, for what the public, we have an opportunity now, that you've now opened the door, Councilmember Bagley, to have a time window, a grace period, if you will, to have those other board and commissions weigh in also. And that might be valuable information for us, that, that the city attorney could bring when he presents that. So to me, you know, that can happen in 30 days. Be mindful, though, that we're all telling him to go down to Denver for as many meetings as he possibly can, to talk to stakeholder rulemaking, getting started meetings, and everything else. And I know he's great, we haven't cloned him yet, but, um, you know, we've set really high, high marks and standards, and I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't kill the poor man in the process. Um, and I know he'll never say no, but, um, I think that, that, uh, we can look at things as, um, we want to get the best regs possible, 30 days, he can present it to us, but should he simultaneously, you know, get it done, and get it to those other boards and commissions? And if, if we tell him 30 days, then we're looking at a draft then, that are we going to send it back to the boards and commissions? Or are we going to have him do it in two weeks, so that he can start looking at the boards and commission opinions? And two weeks might be an unreasonable amount of time, uh, with the, the process flow here. Um, and again, we're stuck in this time warp of 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. Whatever we set as the time limit, I think we need to set aside that discussion separately, simply because the goal, we want to meet the goal. And do we want to put an artificial time limit on a goal that, um, it may not be realistic, it might not be number one, realistic, but number two, it may not actually meet our needs? And the whole point of this is meeting the needs of the city. So we're going to put some artificial time limit on ourselves and on staff, meanwhile telling them to go off and, and play nice with everybody they can in the rest of the state of Colorado to do new rules and to be groundbreaking in two areas. And so I just want to caution that we're doing that piling on thing again. And, um, we piled on people for four months, well, two months now, and they've done a great job, but I don't want to get things to the breaking point.
Councilmember Witt?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I think what Eugene needs us to do is do what I believe Mayor Proten mentioned, is that we need to go through these and give him our feedback now, so that he has that feedback when he's drawing up this new, uh, improved version of the draft. We're not going to put that off for 30 days, because that is going to draw this process out interminably. So we need to go through these point by point, thumbs up, thumbs down, so he has clear direction, so that he can come back with a draft, and then it is able to go to boards and commissions after that.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I'm not as confused as the rest of you, because we did have that conversation last Tuesday night, when we were in the executive session, and we were... I'm being careful.
Yeah.
So, and, and tonight in the presentation, they touched on what's red, yellow, and green, and I thought they did an excellent job in, in telling us that. So if we go through the ordinance tonight, as has been suggested, we can give them what our recommendation is, what we like in green, red, or yellow, and then we don't need to worry about all these 30, 60-day extensions. Because if I'm on, if I understand correctly, we're pretty much 90% there with the ordinance, okay? It's just a few more tweaks and maybe some wording, and that shouldn't take 60 days to accomplish. Am I off-base, Mr. May?
Mayor and council, uh, you know, certainly the review and presentation that Councilmember Bagley is asking for can, can be done within 30 days' time. Uh, it depends a little bit upon, uh, our ability to get meaningful public input. Uh, certainly, we take that into serious consideration, and, uh, you know, certainly invite that kind of input. But as I was mentioning before, I, I think that the regulations and the other areas like MOUs and operation standards go hand in hand, and that the best outcome would be if those two, uh, processes move forward in parallel on, on the same timeframe, since they address the same issue or working towards the same outcome.
Okay. But I guess from the input from the public tonight, I didn't hear anything substantially different than what we've heard from them in the past, or from the compilation of data that staff did with the graphs, where they showed what the, what the critical issues are. Okay, there's nothing substantially different that we've heard. So why would we need all that extra time?
You know, I, I think that, uh, these negotiation processes are not, we, we don't control them as well as drafting the regulations. Negotiations, you know, typically go, the parties meet, somebody sticks out a draft, it takes a week or two to get a response, you take a week to look at that, get a response back, and all of a sudden, you know, four to six weeks go by, and to, to make significant progress. Versus drafting regulations, you know, staff can put in the extra time, uh, and, and it's certainly an internal process, versus relying on other parties for their input.
Right, but you don't need an extension for negotiating the MOUs. We're not tying the MOU to the ordinance. We have two separate things. We have an ordinance that we want to proceed with, that is specifically for the community as we want it, and we're going to push the envelope with it. And then simultaneously, you're going to be negotiating MOUs with COGA and COGCC and, and the other operating entities. I don't think there's any way that we can set a time limit that's going to be satisfactory to negotiate all of those. For those, you take as long as you want, but I'm saying for the ordinance itself, so that we have something set in concrete that spells out what our expectations are of anybody that comes to apply to drill, frac in the community. We have those set. That's why we gave you the directions to do it in 120 days, that's why these people have been busting, uh, their backs to get it done, and we're 90% there. And again, I didn't hear anything substantially different tonight from the public that spoke to us, that we haven't heard for the last five, six months, or the emails that we've gotten. The only consisting message was, "Extend the moratorium." But if we have regulations that are specific, that are clear, that protect us, I don't know what extending the moratorium is going to really buy us. That's where I'm having the disconnect.
Certainly, that, that is an approach to go forward with the regulations irrespective of, uh, the other opportunities for non-direct regulatory approaches. In my mind, I think there would be a better outcome if they proceeded in parallel with a common goal.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Uh, let me address Councilman Samori's comment. I'm not for the 60-day extension. I got the impression that that's how I could get your vote on the 30 days. Uh, to be clear, again, we met in executive session, I was told that the attorney has talked with all of us, I've had very brief conversations with some council members, and I get the impression that everybody's pretty much on board, and that if Mr. May had the time to just tighten this up, he's already received direction. And, we, we have a bit of formal motion, but we were in executive session, and I remember quite well that we did give him instruction, and he told us about what he thought, et cetera. And I'd just like to see him put it in black and white. These regs are not what I was expecting, based on the conversations I've had with Mr. May. And in fact, I think Mr. Bay has conveyed to me that he has more to do on it, and I would like to see him do it, so we can get on with this, rather than have this meeting again.
Okay. I guess my thoughts is, it would be kind of productive to go through what we have right now, line by line by line, because we'd probably be here until 2:00 in the morning, uh, before we could get through it, and because it's probably going to change a little bit and be tweaked. Generally, I think, um, you know, we've instructed them to push the yellow areas, um, as much as you can, and, uh, not do the preemptive red areas, and, uh, so I think he's got the general gist of our direction, without going the string through line by line by line. Um, so anyway, that's, that's my thoughts on it. Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to make one thing absolutely clear. We did not give, uh, Mr. May any direction when we met the other night. We heard what he had to say to us, and tonight is when we're going to give him direction, based on what we heard and based on what we'll review. We did have discussions, but we never gave any specific direction to proceed in any manner, shape, or form on what he discussed with us. Okay, so, can we move on and vote?
Just, I would, Mayor Coombs, uh, I would agree with that comment. My point was, we didn't discuss or have consensus, it's just that I liked what he had to say, and I'd like to see it in written format, so we can then discuss it. That was it. So, let's vote.
No, it's combined right now. Can, are we ready to vote? Councilmember Bagley, can you reread your motion?
Yeah, the amended motion is, I move that we give 30 days to Mr. May to finalize the document and bring the recommendations regarding red, yellow, and green areas into black and white. Then have the opportunity to have Mr. May prevent, present them to the council for discussion, and at the same time, we extend the moratorium by 60 days.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, it passes 6 to 1 with Councilmember Santos dissenting. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I voted no, not because I didn't think the moratorium, the extension of the moratorium is worth doing. I voted no, because I believe that we should go through those areas where staff showed us, are, what our options are. We should have given direction to the city attorney, instead of saying, "Here you go." Just, you know, give us an idea of, of what you want. That we still have in the rules and regs that have been drafted are minimum and recommended. Where is that in there? Uh, did we direct the city attorney or staff to start talking to COGA, to COGCC? Didn't hear that either. Um, that, that motion could have been brought, been drawn up in two different areas. Um, one, to say, "Extend the moratorium," which I may or may not have voted for. Two, you know, give some direction regarding the draft regulations, because now staff is, I'm sorry, pretty much in limbo, um, about where to go, where to go from here.
You know, I, I guess...
I'm sorry, Mayor, and I'm not done. Is that, here, we have been given 300, 300 some odd pages of information. We had an entire week to go through it, call staff, um, and Councilmember Levison, the Board of Environmental Affairs, did see the rules and regs. They did give information. We should have given direction regarding what we wanted to see. You know, what we've done is, we, we've just pushed it back, um, back on staff again, without any, any input from council.
I'd like to kind of respond to what you gave. We, we could, I guess, tonight still have time to go through, at the top level, slideshow, where there's options, and address each one of those options per each slide, is, or were you thinking going line by line through each of the actual written regulations tonight? Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, no, I was actually wanting to go through what staff recommended.
Okay.
But the way the motion is done, is that the, we have directed the city attorney to bring back, bring back regulations that, um, you know, whether it's red, yellow, or, or, um, green, yellow or red, um, to bring back to council here in the next 30 days. So to me, that, that's direction given, unless council wants to, um, 10, 20, and I know some members, you know, uh, I know Mayor's been out most of the day. If you guys are willing to go through them, at least give some direction, I'm, I'm fine with that. But let's actually get to it.
Okay. Councilmember, uh, Bagley?
Can't point to order, I had...
Okay.
Do you have a point of order? Oh, my point of order is that the vote has been taken, debate is over.
Right.
And it's inappropriate for debate to continue. And the proper time, Mayor Proten, was to discuss this prior to the vote being taken. So just, debate is ended.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, Councilmember Bagley, but I can state, if I so choose, according to rules procedure, whether or not, why I voted in the affirmative or in the negative. And I'm just pointing out points that, yes, you're right, the vote has been taken, and direction has been given. I just made the, the, uh, I, I, I just saw that there was other opportunities that weren't addressed. So, in that sense, the point of order is valid.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I was under the impression that we were going to discuss them and review them tonight as well. So, well...
We can still do that, though.
I'm going to make a motion that we have the presentation, and we go through it, and give them clear direction as to what we would like to see when they come back in two weeks or 30 days, or whatever the timeframe is.
Okay, got a motion that's been seconded? That we go through this, where we have to make a decision, uh, either approve or slide by slide? Okay. Okay, let's vote. Okay, it passes 7 to 0.
Mayor, based on, uh, that vote, Brian will go to the slides and try to lay out very quickly what he's looking for as far as direction, and you can tell us what you'd like to see. Come back.
All right, Mayor, council, um, we'd like to focus on the slide areas and some of the, the options. Obviously, the options listed in the slides aren't all-inclusive, the council may have other ideas, but it's just a starting point for discussion. If you'd like to, uh, go to the slide entitled "Review Process," and don't, thank you. So, um, this is the, kind of the incentive approach, whereby if, um, an application can meet minimum and recommended standards, then it can go through an administrative, limited-use site plan process, staff-level review. Um, if it meets just the minimum standards, and only, but not all of the recommended standards, then it would still have to go through a conditional use review, which is a public hearing review process, which is the same process that we currently have under our existing regulations. So, options are, don't change what we currently have in the draft, revise it to all public hearing review process, or change it to only administrative review process. You may have some other ideas as well.
I vote for no. Should we just do a, a vote, quickly?
No.
Okay.
No.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The problem is, I'm, I mean... Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The problem is, I mean, no offense, you do awesome. I need legal advice. The question is, this particular route of review process, as is recommended, and as it's currently written in the regulations that we read this week, where do we stand? Is it permitted, not permitted? Do you want to make changes? Are you happy with it?
Mayor and council, this is a novel process proposed for oil and gas regulation. So there is no case law on an approach like this. We certainly think that it's defensible that the recommended, meeting the recommended standards is a voluntary process chosen by the operator. If they don't want to do that, then they could just go through our minimum standard review, which is what we currently offer. Certainly, a special use process in the town of Frederick was upheld by the courts as a legitimate local land use process for oil and gas regulations.
Okay, and is that how it's written currently in the regs?
Yes.
Cool.
Councilmember Levison?
So, Brian, could you, for the benefit of myself, because I don't remember everything and how this works, and also for members of the public here this evening, to review our, the conditional use, I mean, the limited use site plan where it would be staff review, typically, describe what that looks like. Is there still a yellow sign in the ground that says there's any proposal at all? Is there any way that the public would know? Would the public be able to come to, you know, is the process, is it a development review committee meeting on a Monday afternoon, and everybody, and the applicant comes and the application is discussed, and then staff makes a recommendation, and then there's negotiations back and forth over several weeks to see, you know, how people are going to accomplish things within this administrative review? And then, is there any indication of the public to be able to read those documents, or do they have to go through a Freedom of Information Act filing? Or is there a sign in the ground on a piece of property that says, not only is there an administrative review, but, hey, folks, it's oil and gas? And could we require an oil and gas color sign, like a red one? Or would that be prohibited under COGCC rules to have a different color sign?
Okay, I'll try to answer all those questions. In terms of the limited use review process, there would be a sign in the ground upon application. Typically, there are green signs, development application under review. There is, there would be a notice to surrounding property owners within the specified notice area for the application. There would be a, prior to that occurring, there'd be a pre-application meeting with the applicant to go over the requirements for the limited use site plan require, review, which would be attended by members of the DRC Development Review Committee. So, again, once a formal application is submitted, sign in the ground, notice to surrounding property owners, it'd go through staff level review with the DRC. Anybody who's interested, got a notice or saw the sign, or just curious about the application, could certainly contact our office to review the file. And again, as noted on this slide, it's a staff level review. It's appealable to the planning commission only by the applicant. Used to be that administrative reviews were appealable by any interested party, but that was, that was changed by city council a number of years ago, so.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My understanding of us going through this was to just go through it and tell them and give them direction as to what we like in terms of green, yellow, red, blue, purple, et cetera. Not to get into the nitty gritty details of how it's going to work. We can do that at a later date. Can we just go through the slides and say, no change of the draft review, revise it, or otherwise do something else instead of trying to understand how it's going to work? I don't think that's the purpose of what we want to accomplish tonight, and definitely wasn't the purpose of my motion.
Councilmember Witt?
And I, and I would concur with Councilmember Samori. If our city attorney did not feel that it was legally defensible, it would not be in the draft. So we don't need to go point by point because it would not be in the draft. And then, number two, this is not the form to vet out everything. And this has been available online, and the public can go look for it themselves tonight. What we need to do is just basically a thumbs up, thumbs down on, on what is in the draft. We need to get through it.
And I guess I just, in order for me to vote on it, I just need to make sure that if the, if there's no way that there's the, nobody in the public can actually review this except for papers, that they can't see the notes from a meeting or anything else, is that really the transparency that will give confidence? That's what, that's the purpose of my question. And I just wanted to make sure that we understood what the process was when we vote on it to mean that, basically, this is a staff-only review, the doors are closed, and the only person, if the applicant is not happy with the outcome, they're the only ones who have standing. And the, there is no other legal standing for a member of the public who might be an adjacent property owner to object. They might be able to submit something to the DRC if they understand that process. That's what, you know, and how many times have we heard that we've sent out 750 or 1,000 notices to people around Union Reservoir, and no one's paid attention to it? So that's my point.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I hear you, Councilmember Samori. That's part of my concern with giving, like, my concern in doing this tonight, for example, is the review process is scattered throughout this document. It's not just one section where you go, oh, cool, review process. Right now, number three, on page two, line 48, would be preempted. And my understanding is staff is aware of that. They have not had a chance to address that issue. And there are other areas, so it's impossible to say, you know, without, I guess it don't work that way. I mean, I need a, if it's a legal document, I can't give a thumbs up or thumbs, just thumbs down when I've read it, and there's, I just don't really know where to put my finger on it. I mean, it's a legal document. It's what I read, and I just can't say, oh, review process, thumbs up, because it's scattered throughout, and I've got problems with it, and I'm pretty sure that our attorney could fix it, given some time. That's, that's, that's my only concern.
Mayor, I would only add that the one thing that would help, though, in this situation is, it's not needing to have you give a specific direction, but under the review process, if you generally agree with what is written there as being on the right track, then I think all we need to know is generally okay. And if four of you are telling us generally okay, we will move on to the next one, and we'll say, then tell us generally okay the next one, or revise it. And if you want it revised, just generally tell us what direction you want it revised, and then we'll go on when any four of you tell us, and we can get through it without needing all the details.
Okay. Councilmember Witt?
And just really quick, if somebody has a concern, instead of asking lots of questions, let's just say, I have a concern about this, this, and this, and therefore I am going to vote no, and leave it at that, instead of doing a very long, drawn-out question and answer.
And then I would like to insert something in the limited use site plan, is that I would like to have one public hearing for, for information purposes, a neighborhood, a public hearing, not just a neighborhood hearing. Because, you know, I'm fine with everything except that there needs to be a level of public information out there. And that's, that's what I would suggest for an added thing. And we can throw it in there and just say, throw it in there, and when the draft regulations come back, if we don't like it, we can vote to throw it out.
Councilmember Witt?
I would move that we direct staff to look at the limited use site plan. I mean, is that option number one that's already in the draft?
Yeah, but our choices are no option, no change, revised.
I say no change. That's what I want to say. I moved it.
I'll second it. Okay, that's been moved in second. Let's vote on that. Okay, that's been passed with Councilmember Bagley and Levison descending.
Okay, on the next slide is the zoning restrictions, and this would be a restriction that would not allow surface operations facilities in residential zoning districts. It would require either directional or horizontal drilling or a special exception to extract resources underneath a residential zoning district. And that's, do I need to show you the map, or do you care?
No.
Okay, so, options would be to change, or no change to this provision, or remove this zoning restriction.
Councilmember Witt?
I would move no change.
I'll second it. All right, should we vote on that? Okay, that passes 7 to 0.
Okay, the next slide is regarding use restrictions, and that's prohibiting waste disposal facilities primarily in the, within the city. And so the, the option would be no change, or remove some or all of the restrictions.
Councilmember Witt?
I would move no change.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just for clarification, we're all on the same page that no change is not keep it the way it is. It's just no change means, in general, follow this philosophy.
Right, yes. Okay, I'll second it. Let's vote. Okay, that passes 7 to 0.
So, under the next few slides, there's minimum and recommended standards, and we didn't have a slide for all of those areas. But if you want us to, we can certainly address those. We specifically address setbacks in terms of options. The other areas are financial securities, assurances, noise standards. I guess those are the two main ones that we didn't address with slides. If you have concerns about those, that we want to look at something other than what's in the draft regulations, certainly let us know. But I was going to proceed on to setbacks. And after the maps, there's a slide with some options regarding setbacks. As the current standard is, in the draft, is utilizing the existing standard of 350 feet to occupied structures, which is our current regulation standard, which is above and beyond what the state statewide standard is of 150, but it's consistent with the high-density standard. And then there's also the, our existing city standard for setbacks from streams and rivers and riparian corridors of the 100 to 150 feet. So that's the minimum standard. The recommended standard is the 750 feet to occupied structures and 300 feet to water bodies. And I don't know if either of our legal council want to make any comments on that as well?
I would only say that in the town of Frederick case, setbacks were one of the areas in that case that court held were preempted. And I think this is an area where municipalities likely preempted on greater setbacks.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Isn't there going to be a meeting on Thursday to discuss setbacks?
There is an initial meeting, stakeholders, meeting down at the state regarding the, my understanding it's setbacks to building structures, buildings and structures. It's, I don't believe, I don't recall that the announcement referenced a setbacks to water bodies for.
Yeah, but the building and structures, homes, barns?
Right, schools.
Schools, et cetera. And are we anticipating that there may be some changes to what it is now, or is it going to be the same?
You know, it's just kind of the initial step or meeting for that process. The flyer indicated that the, you know, the process may take several months to conclude, and it may or may not end up in a rulemaking review by the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Levison?
Now, can I get clarification around the fact that, are we on legal standing when we say that we, we will not have, we have a restriction on mixed use having any in oil and gas? Wouldn't that already violate the, the standard, the state standard, when we've already set out mixed use areas in our code to be off limits totally? And so why would we, I mean, we, if we have that already built in, why would these be problematic?
Mayor and council, so I think those are two separate issues. One is a zoning prohibition based on zoning district versus setbacks to inhabited structures or water bodies or whatever particular feature you're talking about. So far, we have not received any comments or public, or feedback regarding the residential zoning district.
All right.
Councilmember Witt?
I would move no change.
I'll second it. Should we vote? Okay, that passes 6 to 1 with Councilmember Finley descending.
All right, next item is outside activity areas. We talked a little bit about this previously. And I'll go to the options slide. So one would be no change. The second one would be to either remove the planning commission as the recommending body, or have them, can't remember Councilmember Bagley, how you phrased that, in terms of, you had made a suggestion regarding outside activity areas, rather than the planning commission being the deciding body, maybe they make a recommendation?
Councilmember, Councilmember Santos first?
Thank you. I move we remove the Planning and Zoning Commission review of outside activity areas and pursue designations through the COGCC for areas that meet the state criteria.
Councilmember Bagley?
Just real quick, say the motion one more time. No, no, no. Yeah, repeat the motion one more time, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. My motion was, option two, which I'll repeat again, remove Planning and Zoning Commission review of outside activity areas and pursue designations through COGCC for areas that meet the state criteria.
Councilmember Levison?
I'm not going to vote in favor of this motion because there is exactly one and only one ever designation. It's not likely that they're going to do it again. And so I think this is, this is like a real loser for local control. I think at least if we, if they say no, we have no option except to pursue a court case. So that sends us down the litigation aisle right away. And I think that having the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also the city council, have some decision-making in pursuing these designations, you know, is, you know, very important. And I think that And I think that it's unlikely that they're ever going to say yes. So, if we don't make some criteria in our own code to say, this is where the no-go issues, no-go areas are, I think we're protecting our public investment, and I don't think that that could be preempted, because we're actually doing what the constitution allows us to do, is protect our own property rights.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, this is a perfect example of why I wanted our attorney to be making these recommendations, and not having the catch-all be the criminal slash family law attorney on council. This is, I don't think that that motion is a good idea, because what we should do in order to avoid preemption, is to basically say that instead of the Planning and Zoning Commission will either determine, or go to the COGCC and ask them for permission, which they might not give, our regulations should say something to the extent that here are the suggestions, fair warning, for example, regarding potentially and/or likely designated outside activity areas. So, we're putting the world on notice that you don't want to necessarily drill here, because we're going to ask that this be designated as an outside activity area. That's currently not in the regulations, but my understanding is that's something that the attorney thinks we should put in. So, by approving the motion from Mayor Protem Santos, we're actually doing what we don't want to be doing.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, how was the Sandstone designation done? Did it go through Planning and Zoning, or was it directly through the COGG? Whatever it is.
After we saw the stake in the ground, we made application to the COGCC.
And it was approved?
It was approved, for the ball fields only, we had requested a larger area, but the commission approved only the developed areas, not the planned areas.
I understand that there's specific criteria.
That is correct.
You know, the 20 people for 40 days, or the 500 people for three days. So, for example, Thompson Park, where it's used by 500 people or more for three days out of the year, would qualify based on that criteria alone.
Yes, we believe it would.
Sorry, Mayor and council, Special Counsel Phil Barber was the attorney for the city pursuing that application, so he's intimately familiar with the details and.
Let me just say this, that's right, Sandstone Ranch was the, is the only place that has that designation, I have a case at the Court of Appeals right now, where we felt we met the numbers, and the commission turned us down on a designated outside activity area. So, it is discretionary with the commission, even if you believe you have the numbers, at least that's the status of the commission rule at this point. We challenged it, it's the Court of Appeals, and we don't know how that's going to turn out.
But aren't the numbers based on the state?
The numbers are based upon the state criteria, but the commission felt that it had the discretion to say, that's not a use that we want to recognize, even if you have the numbers. Councilmember Levison?
So, I want to draw council's attention in the fact that we actually don't, we have Dry Creek Park as a future district park on the map, and because we're not currently using it, even though we've been, we're investing already money for drainage and other things, it would not be considered that use, even though we might have construction people on-site using the property for some city purpose, but it's not that specific narrow bandwidth of recreational use or whatever, and it's not, the casual use of people in that neighborhood would probably not constitute the threshold, unless we had a bean counter out there, taking pictures of how many people are walking their dogs casually, when it's not an official park. So, even though we planned, and we planned that as part of our recreation opportunity for future neighborhoods, and we banked public or park improvement fund to pay for that, designate in our budget, it still could not qualify, and we could have a consolidated well pad on Dry Creek, on Dry Creek Park land.
Well, I would just, if I could just interject, just on that particular item, the Dry Creek Park is an area that's zoned PUD residential, so under this scenario, the zoning restrictions, surface operations would not be allowed, since it is zoned residential.
But if that zoning is changed, somebody could, you know, change the zoning to get some financial consideration from exploration, and then all bets are off, too.
Well, that would be up to the city council to change the zoning.
Right, okay.
Mayor, if I could just add, once again, probably all we need is general direction as to whether you're wanting us to do this, or do this, or stay on course, and we will be able to come back with ideas that may be helpful.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, was there a second on Mayor Protem's? If we vote that down, what I would then be making a motion to do, is to vote on no change to draft on outside activity areas, so it remains as-is, with the understanding that the city attorney is going to beef it up, so that it's not preempted.
Okay, let's vote on the motion that's on the floor now. Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Santos first?
Thank you. Again, we're going to see these again, trying to move things along, we're losing ourselves in the minutia. Voted up or down? So, let's go.
Okay, it was voted down, with Councilmembers Bagley, Levison, Coombs, and Witt dissenting. Councilmember Bagley?
I move that we accept outside activity areas as no change to the draft on outside activity areas, with the understanding that it's a philosophical understanding, and to allow Mr. May opportunity to correct it, so it won't be preempted.
Okay, it's been moved in. Seconded. Alright, shall we vote on that? Okay, that's been passed seven to zero. Okay, next slide, water quality monitoring, it's currently required. I'll leave it at that. Councilmember Witt?
I move no change.
Okay, let's vote. Passes unanimously. Alright, next item, closed-loop pitless systems, currently in the draft, it's required. Hi, Councilmember Witt?
I move no change.
Alright, let's vote. Passes unanimously. Then, next slide is drilling and hydraulic fracturing fluids, this is one where we have a minimum and recommended standard, so I'll leave it up to council to make a motion. Councilmember Witt?
I would move that we remove green fluids, and use of tracers are recommended under the minimum standard, and the recommended standard as well.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I guess, my thoughts on that, just quickly, but we're ready to vote on it, would be to keep the green fluids in the recommended standards, but keep it in the minimum standards, but the one problem with that, if no one's using it, then no one will take the recommended standards, and so it kind of defeats the whole purpose of pushing someone, so I guess for that reason, it's probably not a good idea, so, anyway, Councilmember Witt?
Keep in mind, we can always, when that technology evolves, we can always put it in, but for now, it doesn't exist.
Okay, let's vote. Passes unanimously. Alright, that's all I had, unless council had something else they wanted to bring up. So, we're. Councilmember Levison?
Yes, I would like the city attorney to bring back some information about whether or not it would be preempted by COGCC regulation, for us to enact something for disclosure for real estate within the city, if, for example, you're going to purchase a home, or a business, or a piece of raw land, within the setback requirements of an area where a wellhead could be proposed, that, just like lead paint disclosures, that we look at letting people know, I mean, fair game, we've heard over and over from the public that had they known, they would have made better informed choices. And so, I think that I'd like to see whether or not that's something that we can do, to be fair to everybody, and especially people making the investment in a home.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I am not making a motion to extend the meeting. But I was just going to say, so where do we stand on the 30 days? The original motion was to give him 30 days to do what we just did. So, so, okay, so he's met his obligation, and so is there a timeframe for the city attorney to get us the draft?
Well, you gave it to him 30 days.
That's what I'm saying, so just to be clear, okay?
Councilmember Witt?
I would like to move to extend the meeting through the end of mayor and council comments, and city manager and city attorney remarks.
I'll second it. Shall we vote? It passes six to one with Councilmember Bagley dissenting. Okay, now it's time for comments from council members and the mayor, so I would like to actually go first. I would like to suspend council rule procedure 17.5 briefly, because, the reason I'd like to suspend that rule, is I'd like to basically have us consider and vote on SB 12-015, to see if we would support that as a city, and that's basically the asset bill, and I think that's a bill that really has no downside, it has mostly just upside, and it does affect local people, so anyway, it's a single part, the only thing I'm asking for right now is a motion to suspend the council rule procedure 17.5. So, are we ready to vote on that? Okay, it's been moved and. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, so we're just, we're going to start suspending rules, I'm not going to vote in favor of this thought of suspension, if we're going to bring up potentially contentious items before council at the state level or the federal level, I got a whole slew that we can bring up, and potentially take a whole lot of time away from the business of oil and gas, mall redevelopment, it has been practiced, the standard practice of council, and councils before us, that when it comes to issues like this, that as a nonpartisan board, that we do not get into a potentially nasty political fight. I know this is something you ran on, Mayor, and I, while I may have a, we may agree on this topic, this is not, this item is not, should not come before council, because then we're, again, we'll just have a string of people bringing it up, you know, whether or not we should have gone in Afghanistan for whatever, or should we be drilling in the Gulf, should we be saving the trees in, I don't know, Afghanistan somewhere, or, you know, let's go ahead and bring up whether or not, who we support for political office for the president, let's go ahead and bring up, it just goes on and on and on, so I'm not in favor of suspending the rules.
Well, the reason why I brought it up, because we have a fast timeline, and, you know, because it's coming up at state, and it's pretty much a bill that's supported by both parties, it's not a very strictly a Democrat or Republican thing, it's pretty much a bipartisan, and, so that was my, you know, generally, I would agree with Mayor Protem Santos in the philosophy, and I'm fine, if we vote on this, and vote it down, then that's great, but I decided to bring it up, because I think it's an important issue for our city, because we do have some Hispanic people that perhaps could go to college for what we decide tonight. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, this isn't a Hispanic, you know, now we're getting into being whether or not this is a racial issue, this is not just a Hispanic issue.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm still talking, this is one that could be about whether or not Canadians are living here, or Africans, so let's, and the other thing is, let's take away the partisanship here, it doesn't have to be a Republican or Democrat, liberal, conservative deal, I'm kind of concerned about how this line of thinking is going with you, Mayor, and, you know, I don't want to bring this up, but this is a nonpartisan board, we're trying to do things for the city, and, you know, again, whether it's oil and gas regulations, whether it's the mall, whether we were discussing our retreat, you know, we shouldn't lose focus of what our primary responsibility is.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I bet y'all wish you wouldn't have extended the meeting now, huh? The, sorry, I'm a smart aleck, it's after 11, I take no responsibility for what I say. Exactly, I guess the, I, on one hand, I echo the sentiment of Mayor Protem Santos, but at the same time, we do vote on stuff all the time, that has to do with things outside the direct purview of council, for example, we sent Sandy Cedar to lobby for certain bills at the state level, we read, I guess, once or twice a month, we read things the mayor does, and shakes hands, and they have nothing to do with local stuff, it just sounds good, and I for one, there's a lot of Latinos, and there's a lot of immigrants, and there's a lot of illegals in the community, I'm reminded of one particular client, came here from Ecuador at the age of like two months, doesn't speak a lick of Spanish, was facing criminal charges, and was going to be deported back to Ecuador, they get caught, and if we can educate them, I tell everybody who comes into my office, and I can't help them with immigration issues, I say, go learn accounting, learn business, be an entrepreneur, and so I think it would build a stronger community if we helped these kids go to college. So, rather than debate it, I just say we vote on it, and get it over with, and as we said during fracking, let's take a vote, thumbs up, thumbs down, just get on with it.
Okay, Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Councilmember Bagley, when we've directed Sandy Cedar to go lobby on behalf of the city, it's usually regarding, you know, local control issues, things of general concern for the city of Longmont, not one focused area. Again, by doing this, we just set a precedent for anyone to come up to council and suggest any resolution that we would support at a state or federal level, I'm trying to keep things here local, that we have control over, that we can vote yes or no on. Again, if you want to make your own personal opinion, or express your First Amendment right on a bill, go down to the legislature and go right ahead and do it.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, now, I don't believe that we're proposing a resolution. Eugene, can we just give Sandy direction to support this bill, or do we have to have a motion to do it?
Mayor and council, council rule procedure 17.5 says that if you're adopting a position of the city, it cannot occur, or must occur at a regular session or special meeting, and this being a study session, I don't, my opinion is that you can't give that direction, in that support or opposition to legislation would be a position of the city.
in that support or opposition to legislation would be a position of the city.
Councilmember Levison?
However, if we suspend 17.5, vote to suspend that rule, then we could take a vote to direct a position. Is that correct?
Correct, and I think that's what the mayor's trying to accomplish.
Just wanted to make sure we understood.
Okay. Well, let's, let's vote. Okay, it passes six to one with Councilmember Santos dissenting. So now I'd like to make a motion that we direct city to take a position to direct Sandy Cedar to support SB 12-015, as known as the asset bill.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. It passes six to one with Councilmember Santos dissenting. Okay, are there any other comments from council members? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, as is my custom, recommend a business in town, a small business in town. My business of the week this week is Ron's Printing at 420 Main. Oftentimes, we think we can do our own printing these days with all of the technology we possess, but in fact, when you have a professional printer do it, it always looks better. So my business of the week is Ron's Printing Center.
Councilmember Levison?
And I also would like to remind council that there is a fundraiser on Saturday for El Comité. I know there's a lot on our plate these days, but I'm sure that if we get a couple of people there, we will beat the school district in the challenge of getting people to this event. And I think we won last year, and I'm hoping people will come this year. And also, I'm appreciative of getting some direction tonight on the regulations because, you know, I think a lot of this is going to be a discussed at policy committee and certainly tomorrow at the legislative workshop for CMO.
Councilmember Witt?
Unity in the community is this Thursday at 6:30 at the Plaza Hotel.
5:30.
Wait, no, it is 5:30. And I know there's also an airport advisory board meeting and there is also a transportation advisory board meeting, so somehow I'll try to get to all of those.
All right. Seeing no further, councilmember Samori?
So I think there's a coffee with council this Saturday too, isn't there? And isn't that you, Mr. Bagley?
I believe council, Councilman Finley, she'll be the star of that show, but I shall be her wingman.
City manager, any comments?
Mayor, just to remind the council that tomorrow night at the Omni Interlock and Resort, 6:00 PM is your opportunity to learn how commuter rail or bus rapid transit can serve the Northwest area equally well, if you believe that one. But that is an opportunity that is being provided by our TD and certainly want to remind you that if you wanted to attend that, it's available. And I have nothing else.
City attorney, any comments?
Mayor, if I could ask for a little clarification on Councilmember Levison's request for information on disclosure requirements for sale of real property within setbacks, I think. I just want to make sure that there's council support for me to bring that information back. I've got a lot on my plate and I just want to make sure I prioritize my workload.
I guess the reason I'm asking for that is simply that we can bring it up and discuss it to see what it would look like. Simply because when we've had these challenges with the airport and the noise issues, we had that airport zone, but it didn't seem to work real well. But there are provisions in federal law, especially for that lead paint requirement. So anything built before 1978, there's a real estate disclosure that there is an environmental hazard on your property. And I think that within those, fair is fair. And if we're looking at fair requirements, that people can get information to know the property they're buying, I mean, I think there's already information that if your property sits on a former brownfield site, you get information about that. So I think it's just environmental information that I'd like to discuss it.
Did that clarify it? Mayor, I think the city attorney is looking for council direction, you know. Our rules of procedure say that if you're going to give us direction, the majority of you vote and tell us that. And I think he's looking to see whether or not he's supposed to spend the resources doing that at this point.
Councilmember Witt?
I think we need to take that up at another time. I don't think my brain can wrap around one more thing. Can we talk about it another week? Because if you make me decide tonight, I'm going to say no.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I want to see the final draft regs first and then I'd support that.
Councilmember Levison?
I just wanted to, I guess, you know, I just want to add it so that we have it to look at simultaneously to see what it would look like because then we're going to send him back another week or two later to go and explore this as an option. I just sort of like to do it. So I guess, you know, I move that we ask the city attorney to see what, having some notice for real estate purchases, there would be, what that would look like or suggestion around that. So that's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, let's vote on that. Don't we have to wait for a council member?
He's not coming.
Okay, so it looks like it fails four to two with council members Santos absent and everybody dissenting except for, I can't see. Can we clear the screen? Whoa. So basically, the dissenters were Brian Bagley, Katie Witt, Bonnie Finley, and Alex Samori.
No further comments, Mayor.
All right, the meeting is adjourned.